City Clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Sufferton.
Here.
Alderman Ravel.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Fleming.
Here.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
Alderman Nguyen.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
You didn't call my name.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Here.
All right, great, thank you, and we have a quorum, and we have all nine Evanston City Council members here tonight. So, welcome, everybody, to the Monday, October 28, 2019 Evanston City Council meeting. I know there's been passionate demand in democracy at work earlier today in the Planning and Development Committee, and it's a late night, and I know it's about five of nine right now. This meeting is slightly different because we have several public hearings that have to take place before we get to public comment. We have a sign up here, and only a handful of people have signed up for each of these. So, I think these hearings should go relatively quick. So, the first hearing that we're going to have this evening is a TEFRA hearing, and it's on the Caravalli-Montessori School bonds. The proposal to issue City of Evanston Revenue Bonds Series 2019A Caravalli-Montessori School in two series of bonds, the Series 2019A Bonds in a maximum stated principal amount not to exceed $3,925,000, and the Series 2019B Bonds in a maximum stated principal amount not to exceed $3,375,000, together the bonds, and loan the proceeds thereof to Caravalli-Montessori School, a not-for-profit corporation, to: One, fund the City of Evanston's outstanding revenue refunding bonds, Series 2014A Caravalli-Montessori School, and Revenue Bonds, Series 2014B Caravalli-Montessori Schools, the 2014 Bonds, and together with the 2014A Bonds, the prior bonds; Two, finance, refinance, or reimburse the corporation for the cost of the renovation, exterior, and interior expansion improvement, and equipping of the corporation's private early education elementary school located at 425 Dempster Street, Evanston, Illinois, 60201, known as the school facility; And Three, fund certain working capital if determined to be in the best interest of the corporation; And Four, pay certain costs incurred in connection with the issuance of the bonds and the refunding of prior bonds. So, as I mentioned, we have a quorum tonight. This is the stated TEFRA hearing. I'm now going to open it up to public comment. And so, I've got two people that signed up for public comment for this TEFRA hearing. The first one is Ray Friedman, and the second is Mike Vasilko, if you guys would like to come on up.
A TEFRA hearing, what is it? What's the reason for it? Do Evanston residents have the answers? When we went through this last year, we said that one ad in the Tribune does not fulfill your responsibility to inform all Evanston voters of the purpose and intent of these bonds before the hearing. We all have ward meetings, most have email access, and I received postcards twice this year about events to come, plus there's plenty of news media here in Evanston to get the word out. So, why is there nobody signed up for a TEFRA hearing, as same as it was last year, for $50 million bond for Robert Crown? I'd like to address now the close to $8 million in bonds to a nonprofit Montessori school you are proposing. Does this school pay any money to Evanston funds? I'm not sure. We already have $190 million debt from bonds, with debt service to go up from $11 million to $13.5 million, with a proposed tax increase of 10.9%. It appears our city is being financed in a large part from bonds, and expected to increase our bond debt, sorry, by $10 million per year. How and when will we reach the point where we can start paying down our debt? When will we ever have a budget surplus? We need to be paying more into pensions, not adding more to our debt. Please say no to these two new bonds. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. And to Ray's questions, just so folks know, when Mike finishes, Mike Vasilko comes up, I'm going to ask Hitesh to get up and just answer some basic questions, put this in layman's terms, as opposed to what I just read to everybody, which by statute, I have to read all of that at the beginning of the TEFRA meeting. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you. Similar to what Ray just said, I don't understand why we're loaning $8 million to a private school, apparently a private school that charges quite a bit in annual tuition, I'm hearing $20,000, $25,000 a year to go there. So, it's a pretty elite school, mostly white population, as I understand it, a few grants given out to the minority population every so often. But why are we giving $8 million to a private school as a loan when we can't find, you know, any money to give to a school where it's needed in the 5th Ward? The 5th Ward's been looking for a new school forever, as long as I can remember. We can't find any money for that. Yet, we can find money, $8 million, we can go through, we can, our lawyers, our bonding agents, we can spend money on all of that, all the staff time, to give money to an elite school. So, I'm kind of curious why there's this kind of inequality. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Hitesh, can you come on up and introduce yourself to everybody, so everybody knows your role here in the government? And, you know, talk to us about these types of bonds, what's going on specifically? Is the city incurring any liability? Is the city making any guarantee? And have we done this before? And how does this work?
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Hitesh, this is I Chief Financial Officer for the City of Evanston. Yes, the Caravalli is a not-for-profit 501(c)(3) corporation. City of Evanston has done similar financing for the Caravalli, I think, twice before, once in 2014 and once in 2010. Besides that, City has done this kind of financing for the Royce Moore School, and I think one more organization. So, this is like a, this is kind of like an Evanston has been doing it. Now, the other big question is whether it incurs any liability, whether it affects the city's rating. What if the Caravalli defaults? Is it the city's liability to pay for the debt? And the answer is no. And if you look at this couple of, I think, the documents, I think, which might be part of the packet, where it says even the bondholder, in the event of a default by Caravalli, cannot compel the City of Evanston to pay for it. And Mayor, if you don't mind, I have even, I mean, I talked to our bond council, who helps us on regular bond council, and she was fine, she has helped us in the past, I mean, Chapman and Cutler, the same firm. And even we have the school bond council, the Janet from Karen, and I think she can talk about for a few minutes, just to cover all these aspects, and you know, kind of which help them more, like in the technical details, so I would ask-
I didn't use all my time. I'd like to know what the safeguards are to protect Evanston citizens against default on the part of Montessori.
Fair question. Okay. All right. So, before you hand it off to them, so this, so obviously, the mechanism allows educational institutions, or perhaps other ones, to piggyback off of-
The City of Evanston has a conduit financing, so that they get the tax exempt, you know, financing at lower rate.
Okay.
But again, I mean, it's not in our financials. If you look at the, we have the audited reports for last so many years, and Caravalli already have the financials, Royce Moore's bonds are outstanding. It's not there. It is just to be reported as a footnote. So, it's not in our debt schedule, it's not in our balance sheet.
Okay.
So, it's not our debt in that sense.
Okay. All right. I've got a couple lights here, so they may have some questions, and then we'll go with Alderman Sufferton, then Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Hitesh, is it customary for government to charge a conduit fee for this type of arrangement?
I mean, it is between the understanding and the relationship of two organizations. I mean, it varies from the city versus the other school. Now, our precedent here has that we have never charged them the fee than when we did the two last deals, in one, 2010, and the other one in 2024. But we can, you are, you're not legally kind of prohibited from charging that stuff.
Is there a number that's between what they would pay without our assistance? The discount they get with our assistance that would be, that would make sense?
I mean, nowadays, they, you know, the, what do you call that? Difference between the tax exempt and taxable, it's kind of getting like a slimmer and slimmer. And so, I don't know exactly the market, what, right now, it stands. But yeah, it has kind of shrunk a lot, and particularly with the municipal, the tax law changed a couple of years back, where now, even the municipalities cannot do a tax exempt, what do you call, advance refunding, you know? So, some of those, yeah, that difference is kind of coming down between tax exempt and the taxable bond.
Who's the right person to ask for what would be an appropriate fee to charge for this particular bond issuance?
I mean, we can talk to it, but just like the, I get, when we were talking about it, and we realized that, yeah, in the past, we haven't charged, I think, any organization, I think, including the Royce Moore, for these kind of fees, as an administrative fee. But the one thing is, yes, like suppose our band council kind of worked on it, looked at the document, looked at the ordinance and all that, those fees would be paid directly by the school.
Okay.
School has, like, hired their band council, any administrative fees, TEFRA hearing, publication, all these are borne by the school. So, there is no fee, direct fee, which City of Evanston has incurred right now.
Okay. I guess this would be a question, then, for the city manager. How do we calculate a fee that we would charge for something like this, that's still a win-win for the city and for Caravalli?
Sure. So, we looked into this issue, so that, in all fairness, before tonight, we hadn't looked at this issue. So, we've been looking at it throughout the day. If we were to want to apply some sort of added fee to Caravalli, that would be something that they would not be expecting until this moment in time. So, the council would have to deliberate on what they would consider to be fair, based on it being such a late play in the game. But if the city council wanted to enact a policy going forward, that if we were going to take advantage of, or let other entities take advantage of this kind of conduit financing, the city could assess a fee. Other states, it's typically around $10,000. That seems like enough money that would cover our administrative costs, and it's reasonable, that's typical in the state of Indiana. But there is no standard in Illinois that's currently applied.
Is there any, this may be a question for Caravalli, is there any scheduling reason why we could not amend this, add a fee, and then go forward with this? I don't know, I mean, I'm breaking ground on something? This is refinancing bonds that have already been used to pay for construction, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Thank you. So, answer to Alderman Sufferton's question, is there any reason why, is time of the essence for any particular project? I mean, could we make this amendment? Because I'm very interested in making that amendment.
And I can definitely ask them. I think they have some timeline set up for the bond issuance, but again, I will leave it, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman, thank you, staff.
You could just give your name, too.
I beg pardon?
If you could give your name.
I am Janet Gels Hoffman. I'm a partner at Kat Mutch and Roseman. My specialty, for the last 37 years, has been financings of not-for-profits all over the United States. I was the bond counsel on the two prior Caravalli financings, the financing for the cradle that the city issued, and the financing for Royce Moore that the city issued.
Okay, great.
I'm sorry, did I miss the answer?
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Could I have that question again?
The question is, is there any time-sensitive project that requires this to pass right now, today? Because I am supportive of looking further at a fee for this partnership.
The primary purpose of this, of this bond issue is to refinance the existing debt that the city has issued for Caravalli's benefit, which renovated the building, which they purchased from the city, which was the school building at 425 Dempster Street. The bonds are privately held, and they are currently privately held by Fifth Third Bank. Fifth Third Bank has given a proposal to Caravalli to refinance this on a fixed-rate basis, and the rates that they have quoted to Caravalli are only available for a limited period of time. And those rates, the bond deal needs to close in November for those rates to still be effective. If we delayed this, they would have to go back to Fifth Third and see if they could still maintain the rates that they had offered them. The reason that they're doing the refinancing is to fix the rates at the current low rates. The interest rate markets are moving all the time, and so, they have, because of the way the banks' approval work, they have a limited period of time in which they can take, take advantage of the particular offer that they have from Fifth Third Bank.
Okay.
So, that's the, that's the timing of it.
Got it. Thank you. Other questions I had earlier, and I think they'll be for staff, so thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions that others have that I could be helpful with?
I do have a question. So, what's the difference between this conduit rate that you would get on these bonds through the City of Evanston and the market rate that you'd get if you had to go just to the market?
Well, you mean, you mean the difference between a taxable and a tax-exempt rate?
I'm just, I'm just, yeah, yeah.
Or, I mean, because-
Because, right.
This is a private placement on a tax-exempt basis. Are you looking at the difference between a public offering of tax-exempt bonds or a bank loan?
I mean, I guess I'm not even really thinking about whether it's public or private. I'm just saying, if this conduit wasn't available to Royce Moore, how much would you be paying otherwise in interest?
Gee.
Yeah, and I'm just trying to understand what the delta is.
When you start asking lawyers about numbers, you're probably not asking the right, the right people about it. Unfortunately, we don't have one of the bankers here to be able to answer the question for you. There is typically a differential between taxable and tax-exempt rates. Taxable rates are typically higher. The other thing that typically happens with taxable debt is that it typically is a shorter loan, you know, but can I, can I give you chapter and verse about what the effect would be on this one? No, I can't.
Okay. Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Thank you. So, I asked, what other ways can this financial tool be used? And so, is it limited to institutions, or is it a size of, is it nonprofit only? Where I'm going with this is, what other missed opportunities might we have? For example, the idea of a 5th Ward school, whether it be private or charter, family focus building, how else could we-
The city, the city has the ability to issue bonds on its own behalf. It also has the ability to issue, to issue, to issue tax-exempt debt to benefit any 501(c)(3) charitable organization that it chooses, and that has the creditworthiness to be able to pay back the debt that you're, that you're issuing on their behalf. Obviously, Fifth Third wouldn't be buying the bonds if they didn't believe that Caravalli had the ability to pay back, to pay back the debt. Some charter schools are public option charter schools, some charter schools are 501(c)(3) charter schools. I'm not familiar with family focuses' structure. I would think it's a 501(c)(3), but I'm not sure. But certainly legally, the city can issue debt for 501(c)(3)'s, which is why you, in the past, issued debt for the cradle and for Royce Moore, as well as for Caravalli.
How old is the organization Caravalli, and what's your annual budget?
I'll have to get one of the administrative people to answer that, because I'm, I'm a lawyer, I'm representing them.
Okay.
Excuse me, can one of you answer some financial questions?
So, this product is more used for organizations that have seasoned financials, not necessarily, so the goal-
It's not a subsidy. They have to pay back the debt.
No, I understand that. Okay. I'm just, I'm trying to think about how we can use this to benefit organizations and institutions and neighborhoods that need the assistance, and-
Yeah. We can certainly follow up with more information about that. We haven't had time to fully compile the answers to your questions.
It's a tool that many, that many locales use to benefit.
And do we have a maximum amount? Say, we do identify this as a tool where we could support, for example, family focus, do we have any maximum amount that we-
No, it's not, no, it's not like industrial development bonds-
I'm sorry. Wait, is that accurate?
Excuse me.
Did you have some questions about their budget?
Yeah. How, how, how old is the organization Caravalli, and what is your annual budget?
Right. Hi, I'm Robyn McLeod Springer. I'm the head of school at Caravalli-Montessori. We are in our 54th year in Evanston, and our budget is about $6 million.
Yes, thank you.
Great. Alderman Nguyen.
I do think it would be worthwhile, I mean, these questions that Alderman Ruth Simmons are asking are good ones, but they aren't necessarily relevant to Caravalli at this point. I think that we should get, and I was disappointed in the packet, that there wasn't a better explanation of what these bonds, you know, how this, you know, what, what the city's role in this is, and who's eligible, and, and how this works. Because it's state law, isn't it, that permits us to do this?
Actually, you can do it because you're a home rule entity.
Okay. But it's, it's from the Illinois, the state of Illinois, is the-
It's from your home rule powers under the Constitution.
That's not the question I was asking. But, so, I think we need a memo from the staff that's in layman's language, that, because I remember the first time Caravalli approached the city with this, we had a memo that explained all of this, and, you know, made it crystal clear that the city is, is not increasing its liability, the city has no, no responsibility, and the city is not, not responsible for this. So, we need to have that, and we need to send that out to the public with a lot more information on this. And the council needs to have a session where we understand whether it could be employed by one of the other 501(c)(3)'s in the community. Alderman Ruth Simmons, I had never heard of this before Caravalli came forward in, I think it was '06. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Just to, like, Alderman, I'm just going through the memo. We, yeah, indicated a couple of things, the city will not incur liability to repay the debt, this debt, in the event of a default by the Caravalli. This debt does not appear in the city's financial balance sheet, but appears only as a note in our financials things. Section 2 of the ordinance outlines the fact that the bonds are not an indebtedness or obligation of the city, and no owner of the bonds has the right to compel the city to tax for the payment of the bonds. So, I thought we got, like, the bulk of the, and again, I mean, yes, we could be more-
Hitesh, where is that in the packet? I don't see, I have not, I've been looking for that, and I don't see that in the packet. What page is that on?
Okay, let me see. I'm looking at my memos, I like to see exactly what page.
All I see is the public hearing notice here, and, I mean, I know that we have a-
There's a separate section in the larger packet, because there's an item also on the APW agenda that speaks to the other piece of this.
All right. Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm struggling to get used to this new format that we have here.
And one thing which I think Alderman Ruth Simmons brought up, and that Caravalli has been done, like, this was the third time, so we thought that, okay, the city has done things, the people know that, Alderman, the people know that. The other thing which might, I think Janet brought up, when you said about the focus, and the other couple of the, what's that?
Family focus.
Family focus and others. The important thing is their ability to pay back. So, even if they're, like, qualified as 501(c)(3), we can give them the money, like conduit financing, so the debt, but whether they would be able to repay something like of $8 million debt service. So, and I don't know, I mean, I haven't looked at their financial, but sometimes, yeah, that might be the kind of a-
Do we qualify them financially in creditworthiness? Do we do that, or there's another entity that do, that does that?
No, we don't do.
Okay. Because you said you would have to look at it, so I didn't understand.
No, no, whether they were able to pay back, because Fifth Third would look at Caravalli.
Got it.
Right. So, Fifth Third would look at the, yeah, family focus, and look at whether they can repay if we give them a $10 million loan or $15 million loan.
Yeah.
Caravalli was unwilling to approach the city with this until they had a signed commitment from Fifth Third to take, to take the bonds, and were confident that they could meet the financial covenants that Fifth Third was requiring.
Thank you.
Ms. Hoffman, I just, we've had Hitesh state, and I just wanted you to affirm that if Caravalli were to, you know, go bankrupt and not be able to pay these bonds, is the city liable?
No, the city is not liable.
Okay.
And, and not only does the, the ordinance and the bond and loan agreement say that, the bond itself says that, and Fifth Third signs an investor letter which acknowledges that, and that letter is addressed to the City of Evanston. And those are all requirements before the bond deal can close.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Sufferton.
So, I just want to keep it confined to this transaction. So, there's a cost savings to Caravalli, because the city is involved, and, but we don't have a number for what the cost savings is.
Right.
If we can, but that is knowable. We can figure that out, or come up with a ballpark?
Well, they don't have to do the financing, remember, they're just refinancing their existing indebtedness.
Right. But they're saving money, and the city's involvement is saving money. It's like they're using our Costco card.
I assume so.
I mean, they're getting access to something that they would not have access to otherwise. So, what I would hope we could do, and keep your schedule, is figure out what the savings are, and then figure out a reasonable fee for the City of Evanston to charge Caravalli, where Caravalli still comes out ahead of where they would be otherwise, and the taxpayers get something for being part of this process. Is that something that we can do before November, and still have time for Fifth Third and everything that you talked about? Is that staff, our staff, is that something we can come up with?
Yeah. Yes, we can look at that, and we can talk to our financial advisor, and find out what's the current spread between the taxable and tax-exempt debt.
Okay.
The second thing, more in timeline, I would defer it to Caravalli, whether they would be fine in terms of that.
And then, is Caravalli going to be, yeah, I mean, I'm not trying to put Caravalli in a bad spot, but it seems like we have meetings scheduled between now and the deadline, and we can come up with a number, and you still come out ahead, and the taxpayers get something, too.
Yeah, and Robyn, if you needed to come up, I saw you stood up a second ago.
Hi, my name is Carrie Charles. I'm actually the treasurer of the board for Caravalli-Montessori. I just wanted to speak a little bit to this. We certainly can gather that data. I do want to clarify, though, that depending on the outcome of that, we have other alternatives that could be explored, which would then open up a whole nother can of worms in terms of evaluating it. So, it might completely throw us off our timeframe for being able to proceed with this issuance and with the project associated with the dollars involved. So, this is not as simple as the number calculate come to an answer, because there are factors involved in, that are, that will require us to evaluate multiple options, if that is the case. So, to your point earlier about there being the difference between a tax-exempt and an exempt bond, there are other conduit obligors that can provide that service as well.
What's the advantage to the City of Evanston? I mean, if there's a better deal out there for Caravalli, that's awesome.
There isn't a better deal, but if a fee were to be large enough, it might change the math, and that's what we want to at least acknowledge in our response. So, that's helpful.
But I mean, if we do this now, we're not getting a fee at all, because we're not asking for one.
Right. And then, I think I would just mention that our closing timeframe is November 14th, so that's the date in which we would be looking to close this deal, should we proceed.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I just wanted to note that this item is on the City Council agenda this evening, just for introduction. So, should the council want to just approve it for introduction, staff could go back and discuss this with Caravalli, and come to some sort of suggestion or agreement that we could then bring to council on the 11th, that you could then determine whether or not you wanted to approve it for action on that night.
Right. So, just, there's different perspectives, right? I mean, you could say, well, what's the benefit to Evanston? Like, why should Evanston do this? What are the taxpayers getting out, and you're using us as a conduit? Conversely, you could also say, what's the harm of us doing this, supporting, you know, a important institution that many, you know, family members, you know, belong to here in Evanston? So, there's two ways just to look at it. We've got lots of lights on. Alderman Nguyen, and then we'll go to Alderman Wilson, and then Alderman Fleming.
I'm sorry, did you-
Oh, I had your light on.
Okay, thank you. I do think, I'd like to just say that I appreciate my colleagues being interested in figuring out whether a fee would be appropriate here, but I do think that, given the timeline that Caravalli is on, this is kind of an 11th-hour request, and since they have done this twice with us before, and there has been no request for a fee, I think that, that given, that it is important for us to recognize their timeline and, and make sure that they are not disadvantaged by this, because I think if we put this into effect for the next one that we do, I think that would be very- very appropriate. But, you know, I will speak, Caravalli is in the third ward and has been for, I think, its entire history. They are an economic engine. They're at the corner of Dempster and Hinman for all of this time. They took over, the city actually sold, actually did not sell, rented them the building for a period of time. The city couldn't maintain the Old Miller School and Caravalli has done a really magnificent job maintaining it. It was, it was, it is a Daniel Burnham building, although it's been altered quite a bit. The city didn't have a use for it and Caravalli stepped in and said they had a use for it. And over, over the years, it has been a real asset to the community. It provides a preschool that's very popular and then a relatively small elementary school. It is also a big economic engine to the whole Main Dempster Mile because of the frequency that parents are coming and going. And I, I would have to say, there are many, many businesses on Main Dempster Mile who, who know Caravalli parents well and Caravalli as an institution, as a, as a regular customer. So, I, you know, that, this is, this is a valuable institution in our community and has been for a very long time. And I, I really don't want to put them in a difficult financial position. I recognize that the members of the council would like to charge a fee, but it's, it, it does seem unfair to them, in my mind, to present this at the last minute when they have their closing in, what, 16 days, 17 days, you know?
First, first time I've had it, this is the hearing.
Okay, all right, well, everybody's got a different point. Let's keep going. Alderman Wilson, then Alderman Fleming.
So, that was part of my point. This is the hearing, so I think we're going to be discussing it when it's on the agenda later down the list, correct? As far as the conversation on, you know, actually moving forward the introduction. So, I was just going to say, let's move the hearing forward and let's get to the agenda.
That's a good, good point, because this will be on the agenda. Alderman Fleming, then Rue Simmons.
Oh, this is... Well, I, if we talk about it now, though, then we have to talk about it later, correct? I mean, might as well finish now. But, so my point is, I, you know, I think a fee is a great idea. I also do understand about, you know, kind of maybe you feeling like it's unfair, that the issue for us and this council is, this is the first time we've had to talk about it. So, it wasn't like Hitesh consulted me when you guys came to him and asked my, what, you know, I don't have another opportunity to say X, Y, and Z about something. This is my opportunity. So, I don't mean to make it be unfair and a surprise to you. This is the only chance I've had to talk about it. What I will say, just in terms of staff and for going forward, is that if we do have these funding options available, and I know there are specific organizations and qualifiers in terms of finance, but we should, there should be a way that we make this available, because we know we have a city full of nonprofits, all of which probably will call us tomorrow and say, I didn't know that you all loan money. I'm, I'm being very serious, right? And so, I think that when we're dealing with, and this is not taxpayer dollars, these are, we're a conduit, but this is something that we have, I'm learning the ability to, to potentially help nonprofits out and, and I'm happy, you know, to help Caravalli. But I think that whenever we do something particularly around money, we have to make sure that other people know that they might be eligible as well. And so, you know, a little bit shame on us that this is, you know, your third time and we've had Royce Moore and the Cradle and whoever else, you know, I could, if I put an email out tomorrow to tell nonprofits they could apply for some kind of discounted funding through us, we would have a line of them coming here. So, I just think we have to do a better job as a city to make certain things available to the particular population with very clear rules on how they apply and who qualifies and so on and so forth. So, it never looks like we're playing favorites or you have to be in a certain no to know to apply for these things. So, in terms of the fee, I think this is just for introduction. It gives you all time to kind of think about it, for us to figure out what the fee might be. You have time to shop around for a better rate if you can find one. And then, I think even before the 11th, if this is the next time this was going to come forward, we will all know, because you all will have discussions without us, if this was going to work or not. And so, it's not like we're not going to have a conversation again until the 11th. You will know if you need to move on with someone else or keep forward with us. And I think that's a fair enough time, because that allows you still time to meet your deadline at Fifth Third, if you're going forward with us. I mean, we're not going to talk about it until the 11th, is that correct?
Our next meeting is the 11th.
Right, and if you need to be, be done with Fifth Third on the 14th, you're still not going to have that answer until the 11th, just based on our calendar work. So, I think by asking us to work through a fee and propose a fee to you, I would assume that gives you still some time, because you're not coming back here till the 11th. So, those are my, my two cents about it.
Thank you, Alderman. Just so everybody's clear, the city of Evanston is not the one who's going to be loaning this money, okay? I just want to make sure everybody's clear about that. I don't want anybody walking away. And so, again, if there are other qualifying institutions out there, you need to ultimately be qualified by a bank who says, we can sell these bonds, and there are people in the market that will buy them. And by using this vehicle here through the city of Evanston, it is just giving you sort of some preferential tax treatment, okay? So, you're getting a particularly good interest rate on that loan. But that's, that's what's going on. Alderman Rue Simmons, and then Alderman Rainey.
So, this, this comment really isn't for Caravalli. It's really for everyone, staff, the financial community, Caravalli, everyone that knows, for example, that an institution might, like Family Focus, might qualify, and there's a group of, you know, low, moderate income residents that are struggling to try to preserve it while the conditions are terrible. So, I think this is really, my frustration is that we haven't talked and been, like, creative enough about how we can preserve other institutions. And there's an information disparity in this community that is keeping other institutions and other communities oppressed and not enjoying the same quality of life and, and freedoms and liberties as others. So, I just want to, I want to say that out loud, that I will be sharing this information with some other nonprofits and towns and other organizations that have initiatives to see if this is a product that they could benefit from. But I'm hoping that the community abroad is not withholding information and opportunities to uplift other parts of the community that we say we're all concerned about. So, I just want to say that.
Thank you, Alderman.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I just wanted to add that staff is going to do a full report on this mechanism and who is eligible to do it and how one would go about doing it. And we're going to post it on the website for all to see. So, I'll share that with everybody and you can then share it with your networks.
All right, thank, thank you. We've got one more light on. If none other appear, we will wrap up this public hearing. After that, we've got Alderman Rainey.
Mr. Mayor, I think you, you really said what I was going to say, but I, after listening to Alderman Simmons, I, I still don't think it's clear. And that is, when you go to the banks, the banks are the ones that would send you to the city. And it, the city is really not in any position to qualify anybody for this or to support a program like this. I mean, this, the city really is the, the person that, or the entity that is the last resort here. We're not, we're not, we're not going to run a program of bonds. I mean, it's just not the way it's going to work. And I, I think when you make a, a speech like you just made, you give false hopes. It's a little scary.
No, it's information that I'm, I've had two different leaders of local nonprofits say that until this agenda item, they were not aware and they're going to look into it and see if it's an option for them. So, that's the discussion, yes, they have to have with their bank, with their, with their board, with whoever's doing their financials. Are they seasoned enough to do it? But at least they have the information to pursue it at this point. And that's all that I'm saying.
Just go to the bank. I mean, I've argued for a long time, the banks are the source of a lot of people's problems. And that's where you've got to go to, to solve some of the problems, not, not to the city.
Well, Caravalli's here at the city.
Well, I mean, it's obvious, it's obviously, it's obvious that a lot of people don't know the city's history with Caravalli. They bought a building from us. We know, I mean, all right, I don't, I'm, never mind.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Well, we're going to get more information. City man, in terms city managers agreed to get us all of that, so we can better understand this conduit financing and how it works. Is there anything else in regards to the, to this public hearing, this Tefra hearing? And we don't, not, not now.
Could I just qualify, just, I felt a little bit uncomfortable with the characterization of, of the elitism. And while it is an independent school, 36% of our students are on tuition assistance. And it's, we work very hard to be diverse and equitable and have a lot of growth to do, but we are definitely making good strides in that area, so.
Thank you, and we appreciate having Caravalli here. All right, seeing no more, seeing no more lights. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second?
You can email us.
I'll let you, Ray, I'll let you make my quick suggestion.
Just one quick suggestion. Instead of a fee, if we can, for the loan amount, and I understand it's a very low, low loan amount, of the percentage that they're borrowing the money at, if we added 1% to the loan or 2%.
So, different ways to skin it. Absolutely, Ray. Just got it. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Ray. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Second?
Make one in a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting, hearing is adjourned. That hearing is adjourned. We're now going to move into our second hearing of the evening. The second hearing is the proposed first amendment for, excuse me, is, no, it is. It's the proposed first amendment for the Howard Ridge Tax Increment Finance District. I call this public hearing for the proposed first amendment to the Howard Ridge Tax Increment Finance District to order. The proposed redevelopment plan and project to be presented by the economic development staff and our consultants, Kane McKenna defines a plan to assist a strategically important area of our city in overcoming a number of redevelopment barriers. The proposed first amendment to Howard Ridge TIF district... Get everyone's attention. The proposed first amendment to Howard Ridge TIF district expands the district west along Howard Street from Ridge to Ashland, just west of Asbury. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear from any interested persons or affected taxing districts regarding the proposed plan, the designation of the tax, the TIF district, and the adoption of TIF financing. The city council shall hear all comments, protests, and objections at this hearing. Any interested persons or affected taxing districts may file written objections and/or be heard orally with respect to any issue embodied in the hearing notice. First, I would like to call Bob Richlicky of Kane McKenna to provide additional details about the public notices and conformances to the Illinois TIF Act. Welcome, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Bob Richlicky with Kane McKenna and Associates. As part of the amendment to the TIF district, the city did have to embark with our assistance on a series of notices that were sent out over the last 60 days, 70 days. We first sent out notices to State Illinois, as well as all the taxing districts of record. Those went out certified mail as it related to this hearing, as well as the joint review board meeting on September 25th. Notices were sent to all taxpayers of record within the boundaries of the TIF district old and the amended, as well as all the residential addresses that were identified by Kane McKenna and the city staff. So, residential addresses in the TIF and taxpayers of record within the TIF were also given notice of the hearing and the availability of the plan. There were also two general newspaper notices that were published prior to this meeting, again, identifying the place of the hearing and, and the tenor of what was going to be covered here. And last but not least, there were notices sent out to residential addresses within 750 feet of the boundaries, again, of the old TIF district and the amended. So, that went out to the city of Evanston residents as well as city Chicago. And if my memory serves me correctly, there was over 2,000 notices that went out. So, again, from a standpoint of the compliance under the TIF Act, the city has complied with respect to notices, not only about availability of the plan and amendments, but also this hearing tonight.
Thank you, thank you, Bob. Now, I'd like to invite Alderman Rainey as chair of the Howard Ridge TIF Joint Review Board to provide the report of the joint review board meeting held in September. Alderman?
Well, present at the joint review board was the representative from Cook County and the two school districts, although everybody was invited, and the city of Evanston. And it was interesting, we had a resident who came and made some complaints regarding the fact that Chicago didn't seem to be doing their fair share and did not believe that because Chicago had not kept up, that the Evanston side, the increment there could not be generated to the extent that it would be meaningful. And so, it was so interesting that the two school districts explained to this person that they had, they had nothing but praise for Evanston Tax Increment Financing districts, and went on to say that several years ago, when school districts were laying off around, around Cook County, were laying off teachers, that our school districts were not doing so. And it was because of closing out of various, a couple of different TIFs, that they'd never had to lay off a school teacher. And the representative from the Cook County, Cook County taxing district said that he had two meetings in the afternoon for joint review boards, and he was wondering if our school districts could go with him, because he had never heard school districts praise tax increment financing districts before. So, anyway, one of the great things about this TIF district is, while it's not generating gigantic increments right now, the current district, it has 11 new property owners between Ridge and the CTA tracks, property owners, not just new businesses. And so, this district is, the expansion is going to go from Ridge to Ashland, which, if you know Howard Street at all, that is just beyond the IHOP and the bank building, the street just beyond that, to the west. So, it is also going to include, which is a, a key development, the 60-unit affordable housing building to be done, senior housing building to be done by Evergreen, and the Council on Jewish Elderly Senior Daycare Center, which will be purchased by Evergreen. So, that building has never been on the tax rolls. The giant parking lot to the east of the building has never been on the tax rolls. And the new 60-unit affordable housing senior building has never been on the tax rolls. So, that'll be a totally new increment. The entire thing will be an increment. So, that's a real positive for the, for the district, for the expansion. So, I, you know, I think it's a real plus to expand, it's expanding the district, not extending the timeframe. It'll still end in nine years, I think.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Mr. City Clerk, are there any written comments from the public to be submitted to the city council?
No, Mr. Mayor, there are no written comments that were received. But can I make a quick note about an update to a webpage that we made? It's not going to pop up there. But I worked with Paul Zamasak to make sure that there's a registration form called TIF Interested Part, or TIF Interested Parties Registration Form. And if you fill out one of those forms and submit it to the clerk's office, you will automatically receive updates on any proposed changes to this TIF district or other TIF districts that you register for. And so, you can go to cityofevanston.org/tifdistricts and you can find that registration form. And so, we hope in the future to get folks who submit comments.
Terrific, terrific. Thank, thank you.
Paul Zamasak.
All right, thank you, Paul, and thank you, Clerk Reed, on that. Okay, I'm now going to invite Bob Richlicky again to provide an overview of the proposed first, first amendment to Howard Ridge TIF district. And then, if there's anything after you present that Paul Zamasak wants to add, I invite him to add anything additional. Welcome.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you indicated earlier, this TIF is an amendment to an existing TIF that the city set up in 2004. As a result of the amendment, we are not extending the life of the TIF. That 23-year envelope from, till 2027 with a final payment in 2028 remains. What's primarily here as part of the consideration of the amendment is geography. We're adding the area west of Ridge to almost Ashland. This includes 15 structures. And in order to qualify under the TIF Act, we have to make a demonstration that the area meets certain TIF factors. In this case, it's a conservation area. And what that means in English is that 50% or more of the buildings are 35 years old or greater. or greater. In that case, we made the threshold finding that 73% of those buildings were 35 years old or greater, so that served as the threshold. Then the TIF Act requires us to identify three out of 13 factors, and we identified six altogether. Those factors were, we went into detail of those six factors with the taxing districts at September 25th. Alderman Rainey indicated that we had their concurrence as it relates to recommendation to the City Council for consideration of this amendment. And that amendment also included several other housekeeping requirements as it related to conforming some of the language from when we set the TIF up in '04 to recent legislative amendments that occurred post-2004, and also increased the size of the budget to go from around $9 million to $17.5 million, in order to, again, account for additional area and additional projects that the city could undertake. But those amounts were also set forth in the amendments. Again, they were discussed on September 25th, and also have been available at the clerk's office as well.
Thank you. Paul Zalmasak, do you have anything to add to that? Are you good?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm Paul Zalmasak, Economic Development Manager for the City of Evanston. Thank you, Mr. Clerk and members of the City Council. One thing we haven't mentioned is what's driving this. There are some economic development opportunities as you travel west along Howard Street, specifically the Dairy Queen site, and some auto repair shops that have great potential. As you go further down by, you know, I often forget we have an IHOP in Evanston, there's an IHOP, but down in that area, there's some also, are also some development opportunities. So this is a tool that we can use to catalyze that development.
Okay, great. Thank you for your presentation, both of you. Are there any questions from the Alderman? All right, seeing no questions, I'm now going to open the floor for public comment. We had two people that signed up for public comment. I invite you up. Mike Vasilko was the first, and then David Block.
So I have to admit, I don't know a heck of a lot about TIFs, although I've listened carefully over the years, it's still very confusing. But one thing that was very clear, and I circulated this to everyone not that long ago, last week, overhearing part of Mayor Lightfoot's budget presentation where she said, and I quote, "The day of TIF slush funds are over in Chicago." So, you know, if we're counting on the City of Chicago for supporting their side of the Howard Street as a TIF, that could very well be in question. I don't know what that particular conversation has been about, if any, but she seems to be on the right side of not using TIFs as a slush fund. And I think some of that has happened in Evanston over the years. Some of that has happened on Howard Street. Howard Street, that area of Howard Street is not a blighted area, which is what TIFs were originally intended for way back in the day. They've evolved, of course, now. Their purpose has never been for economic development, as I understand it. It's always been for infrastructure, needed infrastructure. So we're using TIFs as a slush fund. Somebody mentioned the school districts are getting money from TIFs. Well, that's news to me. I understand, our property taxes are high enough, school districts are getting money from property taxes. I'm surprised to learn they're getting money from TIFs, too. And I guess, lastly, I'd like to understand more about this $9 million to $17.5 million increase, it sounds like, in what's capable in the way of bonds. So that's really the goal, is to get our hands on, you know, another $8 million and $8.5 million to spend on Howard Street. Is that correct? I'd like an answer to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next, we've got David Block.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm David Block. I'm the Director of Development for Evergreen Real Estate Group. I'm also a 13-year resident in Evanston. Just wanted to let you all know that we are still actively pursuing, as Alderman Rainey mentions, the Affordable Housing partnership that we have with CJ Senior Life. We've been hard at work with our design team, actually a pair of architects who live in Evanston, and we've been back and forth with city planning and zoning staff. So we are very close to being ready to go through the city review process. We're expecting to go to DAPR, I think either next week or the following week, and then from there, we'll follow the process through. So we are making progress, we're very excited about this, and we're fully in support of these initiatives. Anything we can do to help further the advancement of Howard Street, where we are about to make about a $25 million investment, is progress in our views. So thank you for your support.
Great. Thank you, David. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this public hearing? Ray, come on up. Oh, I didn't see your name on there, but we'll add it. I had your name on, I had your name on the next one. We got one more after this.
Okay.
Welcome.
For City Council?
No, that isn't even City Council. The other one we've got to do is a truth and taxation hearing, and then we'll get to the City Council meeting.
Okay, so, so, real quick, I just, first of all, I wanted to say, I just spoke to Jill Greer sitting behind, and she straightened me out on the Caravelli Bonds, that, how they work, and I had no idea that they were not, that they were not being charged to the city, or that it won't be a negative effect as far as, you know, credit rating or anything. So I just wanted to throw that out there. So after talking with Alderman Rainey about TIFs, and especially the Howard Street TIF, I was just wondering if there is projects planned for the Howard Street TIF. But I also have a problem with not having the money in the TIF, and I understand it's a catch-22, because you're getting, you're getting tax money in order to put into a project. So my thinking is, well, you collect the money first, and then you have the money to spend on a project, or projects, whatever. But this way, we're taking out bonds. So we're bonding out the TIF. I think all of the TIF, we have five or six TIFs, and I think they're all bonded out. So then my next question is, is what's the limit for bonding out a TIF? Is there a maximum amount that we can, we can put into that? And then when do we, when do we start building up the money within each TIF district? That's it.
Great. Good questions. We'll try to, we'll try to get these questions answered, and then we'll close out this hearing. I got Alderman Rainey?
Well, I'm wondering if you will allow a response to Mr. Vasilko about paying the school districts?
Yes, I will.
Okay. When I made that statement, I should have been more clear. We closed out a TIF or two, and the way we pay out the schools is, I should have said we paid out a lot of people, but we take the balance of, I like it when we have no balance, because that means we get to spend it all at the end. But when we have a balance, when we close out a tax increment financing district, we must pay out all of the taxing bodies based on their percentage of the total tax bill. So if the, if the District 65 is 40% of the tax bill, we have to pay District 65 40% of the balance, District 202, 80% of the balance, whatever the balance is, that percentage that they are on the tax bill. So that's how the school districts get money from the TIF.
Yep. Thank you for that clarification. And the idea, again, for not only the school districts, but for the city and all of the taxing authorities, is that for these areas that are designated as TIFs, where you're trying to generate investment into those areas, regenerate those areas, so that overall the tax base is going up, and that's good for everybody and all those taxing entities.
And furthermore, they, one of the things that the school district said is that when they know one of our districts is getting ready to retire, they start planning to spend that money, the big money. When the total TIF expires, they know how much they're going to be getting, and it's just really a bonanza for them.
So I want to answer one more question. I don't know if it's you, Bob, or to our city manager's staff, or Paul Zalmasak. There was the question about the forecast that you put in there, I think the $8 million to the $15 million, and, you know, how entities think about when they're going to bond or borrow money from a bank or whatever to start those first projects off.
Sure. As it relates to the budget amount, again, that was, some extrapolation was taken into account there. You know, we didn't have all the projects identified specifically. We had a good idea, as it related to city's past experience with that TIF District, and the kind of properties that we were including, and that was basically a guesstimate that we took in as it related to the expansion of the budget. We knew we were going to have a larger budget. It was also our recommendation to increase that a little bit more, just because of the fact that if you don't put it in at the amendment, we'd have to go through this whole process again. So the idea was to put in a contingency, as well as an allocation for adding additional properties. So again, and we based it on the old TIF.
And again, if any loan is taken out against the TIF, that is going to come up before the Evanston City Council. We're going to have a discussion about that. None of that is happening, you know, with the approval of this tonight.
That's absolutely correct, Mr. Mayor. The TIF plan is more of a permissive document. It mentions things like financings, but it's up to the City Council to make that decision and approve it.
Okay, great. Are there any, any other questions before we close this hearing? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to close this hearing? Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. This public hearing for the Tax Increment Finance District, the proposed first amendment at Howard and Ridge is now closed. Thank you, everybody. We are going to move on now to the third and final public hearing. This one is the Public Hearing on Truth and Taxation for the 2019 Tax Levy. The Evan, excuse me, the Evanston City Council is conducting a public hearing of the 2019 Property Tax Levy. The purpose of this hearing is to allow for public input on the proposed levy. There will be no final action on the tax levy today. I hereby convene the hearing for the 2019 Property Tax Levy to be open. The property, the 2019 Property Tax Levy is included on page 40 of the 2020-2021 Proposed Budget, and can be found at cityofevanston.org/budget. Okay, so if you want to follow along on your phones or your iPads, again, that's on page 20. So I now open this up to any discussion. I'm going to start off, right now, I've got four people who have signed up for public comment on this truth and taxation hearing. Evie Russell is the first one, then Ray Freeman, then Joe Doherty. Welcome, Evie.
I'm not sure if I'm in the correct place. I was going to talk about park projects. Is that part of this budget?
For the, it is, but this is just about the levy, but...
Can I talk about this?
Go ahead and talk about it, sure.
So I have been a resident living in front of McCullough Park for 39 years. I'm shocked that the city is suggesting a price tag of $825,000 for renovations for this park. My neighbors would agree, even if such a figure were warranted, this is absolutely not the time for the city to incur in such expense, particularly one funded by bonds. They're more pressing and worthwhile projects for the city to pursue. However, $825,000 is not at all a needed figure. We don't need a luxury renovation. The problem of water accumulation under the swings, for example, can be first addressed simply with several bags of wood chips or more dirt. If that doesn't solve the problem, regrade that specific area, but not the entire park, which does not need it. Replace the trees that were lost through the years, shouldn't be too expensive. The roots will soak up excess water. Regarding the play equipment, it does not to be replaced entirely, just fix the rotting wood. Adults often, who do not regularly visit the park with kids, imagine all kinds of fancy needs for a park. In fact, most children are happy with a slide, sand, and added water. I recently saw children busy creating tunnels in the sand in our park, just like my son loved to do with his friends 23 years ago. Adhering to new park safety regulations shouldn't also require an extraordinary expense. Also, by floating such a figure as high as that, you're giving a blank check to your consultants. Finally, there is also suspicion among us that such a figure is being floated to, possibly, mollify the stadium neighborhood, perpetuate the false impression of neighborhood privilege, and showcase this park for the U2 crowds. Please involve the surrounding neighborhood, both for input and advice on the McCullough Project. This park is extensively used by closely knit community of parents and old timers living not just next to the park, but many blocks away in all directions. This community includes landscape specialists, educators, gardeners, carpenters, et cetera. Please, use our knowledge and our experience with this park. We could save you a lot of money in many aspects for the renovation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. And just so, just so everybody knows, you know, whenever we do a major renovation to any parks, and correct me, the folks that have been up here for a long time, we always seek neighbor input before we start that project and everything else. So if that project goes through McCullough Park, that's what will happen. So neighbors will be involved in their input sought. Okay, we're going to move on to the next comment. Ray Freeman, then Joe Doherty. Welcome again, Ray.
Thank you, thank you. Long time, haven't seen you. So I can honestly say, I've tried to pay attention as much as I could. I don't understand the tax levy. I understand it's supposed to be 10.9%. I don't understand how that directly affects my property taxes. And I've asked a couple of people, they don't understand it either. And I, and so if the public hearing is to voice our displeasure about the 10.9 tax levy, then I say, don't do it. The end.
Thank you, Ray. Joe Doherty, then Mike Vasilko.
Mr. Mayor, I might comment in more budget-related, it's not specific to the property.
To levy? Yeah, let's do that, if you don't mind. Yep, that'd be great. Okay, Mike Vasilko.
I second what Ray said, to start with, but to go a step further, on the bottom of page 40, so it does reference the 10.9% city and library net levy, yet it goes down, two more lines, and it says total gross levy, 13.1%. So that also needs to be explained, because I think if everybody who sat behind that desk was honest, you would, you would agree, there's no need for any kind of tax levy. We say this every year, you find a reason to come back with one. It's all about cutting waste and making things more efficient, and not wasting money on projects that we can't afford. So, you know, I speak to them blue in the face about such things, it rolls off one shoulder and onto the next. We don't need to spend this money. I don't want my taxes raised again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay. I'm now opening it up to the City Council. Any comments about the tax levy in this hearing? All right, I am going to ask Hitesh, if you would just come up, because there was the question raised, and while we have people here, I would like to help people understand how they can correlate this tax levy to their tax bills. And I know it's not, it's convoluted. So if you could just help people at a high level understand that.
Excuse me, good evening, Mayor, and the members of the City Council. So yes, the net levy increase proposed is right now 10.9%. Now, few months back, in the February or March, when the Cook County SSR sent out the bills about the reassessment for the next year, I mean, the first, it would be applicable in the August 2020 bill. And, I mean, I got so many calls, we heard it, it was in radio, newspaper, every, that, okay, if I, my assessment went up by 20% or 50% or 80%, does it mean my taxes would go up by the same amount, like my taxes would go up by 80%? And the general answer is no, and the reason is that we still don't know what we call equalized assessed value. You know, your property taxes are determined by the rate. What is your property tax rate, and what is the EAV, equalized assessed value of the overall property? And in general, we see one thing, and I think the Cook County SSR has stressed that, too, that commercial properties did not pay their fair share for so long. So there's definitely a shift in burden from the residential properties to the commercial burden from the residential properties to the commercial properties in terms of overall property tax burden. And we had a couple of scenarios, like one of them is here, like based on the current numbers, looks like the city of Evanston will get like a $4.5 billion in the equalized assessed value. Currently, it is $2.7 billion. And if you see the, like the impact, that, okay, if there's a market value of property 100,000 to 700,000, what were the 2018 tax, city portion of the tax, and these are the actual numbers, we have it available from the Cook County, and then the 2019 estimated levy, we put it in average 25% increase to the residential, because that is the number we got from the Cook County, that overall increase to the residential property in the city of Evanston is 25%. So we applied that, yes. Every individual owner could have 5%, even I noticed a couple of have some reduction, or it could be 50% or 10%, but we applied just an overall 25% increase. So like in the 100,000 home, they paid $540 in the city portion of the tax for 2018. If their EAV goes up, like with the 25% increase, the 36,000 would be their equalized assessed value, when we take the revised EAV. And their property tax would be, the city portion only, again, $443. So potentially, there is some reduction. Now, again, we don't know after the, I mean, every residential, or not every, but most of the residential owners and the commercial property owners, they are going through the uphill process through Cook County Board of Review, and it could go to the even state, Peter, the board at the state level. So sometimes it might take time. And we won't know our final numbers until late June or July next year. So, so this is the one scenario. Then what we did is we did the one more scenario that, okay, let's see if the, we don't get the full EAV, which is like projected, because they, you know, most of the people, the commercial entities going through the uphill process. What if we just get the half of the proposed increase? And we get to a 3.6 billion in EAV instead of four and a half billion? And we came up with this number that, okay, 100,000 market value of the property, they are paying $540 in 2018, their equalized assessed value with the 25% increase being built there would go to 36,000, and their amount of increase would be $16. And again, these numbers are based on the property tax, which is the increase which is proposed in our city of Evanston budget. So you would definitely notice that, yes, if you have a 10%, like see the 25% increase, but the reflection on the final property tax bill is less than that. And again, yes, we don't have the equalizer or the multiplier, which is determined by the Department of Revenue at the state of Illinois. Cook County would decide the assessed value, which would finally decide our equalized assessed value, and those numbers would be available next year. And these numbers would decide the ultimate tax, so.
All right, so to simplify, because, so the 10.9% levy is not, does not equate to all of our tax bills going up by 10.9% because of the reassessment and the fact that it is apportioning that value in a different way than it has in the past between residents and commercial properties.
Right. And one more thing I would like bring it up, it's a good point, when we say 10.9% increase in city portion of the tax, city's portion of the tax is even less than 20%. So when we increase the tax by around 10% of our 20% bill, it kind of equates to around 2% increase of your overall tax bill. But particularly, yeah, if we get some of those like increased EAV and all that, yeah. I mean, I think the overall sense is right now, the modest homes worth 100,000 or 200,000 may see no increase or even a little reduction, and that will be borne more by the higher-end homes or the commercial properties.
All right, thank you, Hitesh. All right, any, any comments, or we'll close this hearing? I'll let, I'll let Mike have a question. Oh, Doreen, you can have the question quick.
I struggled, I struggled with very good tutorials at the, at the sessions I went with regard to this. The question I ended up walking away and still have, even after that generous explanation, is that there's assumptions built into this, and that the smaller homes aren't going to be taxed as much as the larger homes, and there's going to be this shift. There's nothing that I know of that speaks to that, except our own attempt as a city to try and look at equity. I don't know where the state is on this. So I don't know where these assumptions go, and that's where I'm confused, and that's my honest assessment. Thank you.
Thank you, Doreen. She is right, there's a lot of, there's a lot of assumptions baked into all of this, because it's a sort of.
Hitesh did not address the 13.1% total gross levy on page 40.
I can address that. The 10.9% is the city portion, it's 13% with the libraries added on top of the city portion.
Okay.
Go ahead.
10.9% is the city portion of the overall, including library, it's a net levy. Now, what happens is every year, we don't get the 100% collection. So Cook County allows to a certain extent to what they call a loss factor, which we can add. Now, obviously, debt service, where we have to bond and interest, even in the past, like some of those recession times, the property tax collection ratio was as, as low as, I think, 92, 93%. We still have to pay the 100% of the bond. Where would we make up that money? So Cook County has the allowable limit for the loss factor in the general levy, as well as the debt service levy. So that is that gross number. Like suppose last year, I'll give you the example, police and fire pension fund, we got the actual report recommended contribution, so we levied that number. We still did not get enough money. What we did is, we took it out of the general fund property tax money and made them whole, because we have to kind of, based on our policies, we have to make them whole. So this is like 13.9% is with the loss factor built in. But ultimately, we will get what we are kind of levying, because generally, there are, I mean, last few years, I see that it sometime 95, 97, 99, depending on the economy and all that, collection rate.
Thank you, Hitesh. I stand corrected.
Thank you, Hitesh. All right, seeing no more lights, is there a motion to adjourn this hearing? Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing for the truth in taxation for the 2019 tax levy is adjourned. We're now going to move into what will be recognizable to many people, which is our standard city council agenda. The first thing up is mayor public announcements and proclamations. He'll be happy to know. I don't have any tonight since it's 10:10. All right, city manager, do you have any announcements?
Yes, I just wanted to follow up on the discussion at the end of P and D about meeting on November 11th. As it stands right now, we do have a meeting scheduled for that evening. It is Veterans Day. Would love to get a straw poll from the council members on if people are able to attend that meeting, or if we should consider having it on another evening.
I plan to be here. November 11th would be our next meeting.
Okay, seeing general consensus, we'll, we'll keep that regularly scheduled meeting on the 11th. Thank you.
All right, thank you. City clerk, do you have any announcements?
I just have one reminder for folks, that you can sign up for public comment online. If you go to cityofevanston.org and go in forward slash city clerk, you can click the public comment tab and sign up online. I'm sure there's some folks who used today, and there's a big rush of folks signing up for the, to speak on agenda items tonight. I think a lot of them have left. But you can sign up online if, you can wait a little bit longer to see where the council meeting, when the council meeting is starting. And you can also make sure you're at the top of the list, so you don't have to wait several hours to speak. So that is my only announcement and reminder.
Okay, thank you, city clerk. It's hard to tell, I've got 38 people that have, 37 people that have signed up for public comment, but again, some of these people, I don't even know if I have 37 people in this room, so I'm thinking some of them may have left. So I'm going to go with, because taking 37 by the total amount of time that we allocate would be about a minute 15 each. Because I think several people have left, I'm going to go with a minute and a half, okay? You know, we set aside 45 minutes total. And so let's go ahead and get this started. I'm going to.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, if I can make a suggestion, Mr. Mayor, if I can make a suggestion, maybe we do two minutes per speaker, and once we get to our 45-minute limit, then we reduce the amount of time, because we, our rules do say that we can stop at 45 minutes.
I know, but I don't know if that's fair to people. Let's, let's, let's see with the show, I think, I'm glad that we're trying to solve this problem. So let's just see with the show of hands. Keep your hands up for a minute. How many people want to talk? Okay, keep them up. One, two, three, four. Okay. Bill, your hand's not up, is it? All right. Five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22. All right, I got 20, 22 people. I'm going to give you, all right, that's the best I could count from my, my survey. I'm going to give everybody two minutes. When you're at 1:45, I'm going to say thank you, just like Alderman Ru Simmons did earlier. And when you're at your two minutes, I'm calling the name of the next person, okay? So let's get this started. Carrie Von Hoff, we've got first, Kimberly Curris is second, and then Margaret Forst. Welcome.
Good evening, city council and Mr. Mayor and Mr. Clerk. Carrie Von Hoff, I'm a proud Northwestern alumna, class of 2000, and a resident of Evanston since 2003. I've lived on Bryan Avenue about a block from Bryan Field for the last 15 years. I oppose the NU zoning tax amendment, and specifically would like to address the issue of precedent. That's my bailiwick, as I'm a practicing attorney as well. Several years ago, football parking started on the greens of Canal Shores Golf Course on our block, when neighbors expressed concern about the idea and suggested the problems that would result from tailgating at the course in a residential neighborhood. We were assured there were no plans to allow tailgates at Canal Shores. In 2017, despite those assurances, tailgating began at Canal Shores. We were told, let's see how it goes. Now, tailgating on the greens is established and expanded despite feedback from neighbors that things are not going well. Garbage on the streets and parkways, disorderly conduct, and reckless driving are now regular game day occurrences on a small residential street with many young children, including my three. This is an example of why many people in the neighborhood are opposed to an amendment that would allow professional events to take place at the athletic complex. Time and again, when given an inch and saying it will go no further, Northwestern has, after a shortened time, taken a mile and used the conceded inch as precedent to continue to take that mile. Northwestern has not acted as a trustworthy neighbor. They're now seeking a privilege unearned that has significant potential to change the neighborhood by bringing professional events into the athletic complex. What has happened at the tailgates in Canal Shores is just a prelude to what will happen with professional events. I'm very disappointed in Northwestern.
Thank you.
And ask you to reject the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Kimberly Curris, Margaret Forst, Jill Greer. Let's see, are you, all right, if we don't have, yeah, Kimberly, we don't have Margaret, Jill? Oh, yeah, if I call your name, come on up. All right, and then just say your name, so we can capture your name on the record.
Margaret Forst, 1322 Livingston. In recommending this proposal, the planning committee states that the proposal is consistent with its goals stated in the committee's comprehensive plan to quote, "support the growth and evolution of institutions," while recognizing that they are part of their mostly residential surroundings. The committee seems to have dismissed the many voices, many which we have heard tonight and in meetings before, who presented evidence using well-researched facts to clearly present the adverse effects of the zoning change on the surrounding residential community. The Northwestern proposal will be good for only one community, Northwestern itself. Northwestern cannot widen Asbury or put more than 10 parking spaces on my residential street. The financial benefit to the city's budget will be small, while the erosion to the quality of the residential community will be great. The Planning Commission needs to consider its mission stated elsewhere in the Planning Commission, oh, I'm sorry, elsewhere in its comprehensive general plan to quote, "preserve the quality and integrity of residential areas through devices such as zoning, and to guard against spillover nuisances into residential neighborhoods." Clearly, a zoning change is not in keeping with this mission. Acknowledge the effect of spillover nuisances on a well-established neighborhood of property taxpaying residents, and vote no to the zoning change.
Okay, thank, thank you. Jill Greer, then Joe Doherty, then Harris Miller.
Thank you. I'm Jill Greer. I live at 1321 Jang Street. I'm also a Northwestern alum. I'm a 20-year football season ticket holder and a 16-year resident who truly loves living in the U2. But I'm really frustrated. I think this, Northwestern's proposed amendment is dramatic, and I'm frustrated that it's not accompanied by any comprehensive or expert-validated proof of concept. I mean, that seems pretty straightforward, and I don't understand how the council is considering supporting it at this point. I don't understand why the burden of proof has fallen to me and my neighbors to demonstrate the harm of this proposal. I feel like the council should be insisting that Northwestern demonstrate with data, facts, and expert testimony, that the amendment will first cause no harm, and then that will actually be net beneficial. I heard many council members, actually at the earlier commission, making that same argument, that anecdotal accounts and a few PowerPoint slides is not a feasibility study. I feel like we just all deserve more than trust us. This will be awesome. I'm frustrated because the two-year sunset isn't a substitute for this kind of study. Turning the city and my neighborhood into test subjects, creating potential havoc and definite uncertainty in our community for the next two years is unreasonable, unfair, and unjust. That said, if the council moves to approve the amendment, I implore you to thoroughly analyze the issues, evaluate the outcomes carefully over the next two years, and please reach out to those of us who live in the community, so that we can share firsthand accounts with you about how problematic we think this is. Thank you.
Thanks, Jill. Joe Doherty, come, come on up, Joe. Then we've got Harris Miller, then David Staub.
Good evening. My name is Joe Doherty. I'm here to talk about something other than Northwestern. I'm the chief legal and legislative officer for the National and Illinois Self-Storage Associations. I'm here this evening to explain why we believe that the proposed self-storage unit tax would be harmful to Evanston, its residents, its residents and its businesses. First, allow me to explain a little bit about the self-storage industry. Self-storage businesses started approximately 50 years ago to meet the needs of individuals and families in transition or facing difficult life circumstances. In our industry jargon, we refer to the four Ds of storage, death, divorce, dislocation, and disaster, sum out of fifth, downsizing. As you heard from one of our members this weekend, the average self-storage tenant has a household income below $55,000 and lives within 15 minutes of the storage facility that they use. These facts taken together show that a self-storage tax in Evanston will have a disproportionate effect on lower and middle-income residents of Evanston and its neighboring communities. There's been some discussion about the existence of self-storage taxes in neighboring communities such as Wilmette and Skokie. Wilmette looked at last year, but did not implement a similar tax. A similar tax is currently on hold in Skokie, as we have discussions with Mayor Van Duzen and village staff. Skokie's passed that tax on a consent agenda without any public debate or comment from the affected consumers or businesses. Respectfully, I suggest that Evanston take a different approach by engaging with the self-storage businesses in your community before deciding whether to move forward with this tax. We welcome that opportunity to meet with city's elected officials or staff. The self-storage businesses in Evanston paid approximately $350,000 in property taxes to the city of Evanston in levy year 2018, with, as you heard earlier tonight, likely increases in 2019.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. We are more than willing to pay our fair share of property taxes to your community, but we believe an additional tax on self-storage customers goes too far. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Harris, you're up next, David Staub, then Lynn Trotman.
All right, good evening. Harris Miller from the Fourth Ward. First of all, please interview all city manager hiring firms before you choose Gov HR USA. We should not simply choose them because they're operated by former Evanston employees. Also, please oppose ordinance 135-0-19. It prefers Northwestern over Evanston and Wilmette residents. Since when does the university rule over us and pay little revenue to the city? Maybe they should fill the city's budget hole with $11 billion from the endowment fund. Also, we should consider the citizens' network for protection, and also have the citizen police review board run simultaneously as an experiment. I know. Also, as for ordinance 116-0-19, I live on Sherman Avenue in the Fourth Ward, as you know. It states the need for additional meter parking on Sherman from the alley just north of Main to the alley south of Washington. We already have those signs for residents from 7 to 9 during the week. I'm just wondering how this will impact the Fourth and Ninth Ward residents. Also, I would suggest maybe having residential permit parking from Dempster to at least Madison to maybe negate that issue that you have instead of having the meters. Finally, as with everything that I brought together here, we should definitely think about diversity when it comes to the Citizens Network of Protection.
Thanks, Harris.
And thank you. And also for the city manager search. Thanks.
Great, thank you. So just so everybody knows, when I say thank you, it means you've got like 15 more seconds to wrap it up, and then I'm calling the next person. All right. You're all doing good. David, welcome.
Hi, I'm David Staub. I live at 2627 Broadway. I've been a 35-year resident of Evanston as well. I'm not here to speak for myself, but as a board member of the Central Street Neighbors' Association, our board voted to oppose the proposed Northwestern University change in zoning for two reasons. One is we believe that although it was structured as a text amendment, a text amendment is supposed to apply to all parcels that fall in that category, we feel that it's a little duplicitous where there's only a single category, only a single property in that category to say that this is really a text amendment applying to all U2 parcels because there is only one. Secondly, the burden of proof is supposed to be on the applicant, and we feel both the Plan Commission and the Planning and Development Committee today basically accepted what Northwestern was saying as fact, and if ever the decision was challenged based on the record, the fact is, there is no record. Simply, it's like a plaintiff in a case saying, "I'm going to rest on my complaint." Well, there is no summary judgment in this case. You're supposed to consider the facts. There was no parking study, no traffic study, no impact study, and, you know, if they had done that, the result might be the same. But they haven't done it, so they haven't carried their burden of proof, and there's really no basis to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Lynn Trotman? Is Lynn here? Lynn Trotman, Ted Trotman? Okay. Roger Sosa? Kathleen Quinn? All right. And then we've got Stuart Gottman, George Halick, and Ted Pickus, and then Virginia Mann. Welcome.
Hello, City Council. My name's Kathleen Quinn. I live at 2227 Harrison. We've been there for about 20 years. We are big fans of NU. We're season ticket holders. However, we are adamantly against the request that the university has made. Not only have they not made their case, they're not being held to the same standard that I've seen as a resident for 20 years. If I want to do something for my house, I have to do all kinds of things, all kinds of documentation. I don't see the university being held to that same standard. We are just beyond Green Bay Road, so anytime there's an event at the university that has like a Welsh Ryan-sized crowd, you can't drive down Central. That impacts access to Evanston Hospital, and now that St. Francis is no longer delivering babies, it's the primary Level 1 hospital in the area. There are two fire stations on Central Street, the one by the golf course, and you know where they are, and what's the other place? Oh, sorry, Three Crowns. It also impacts access to Three Crowns. So we are against it. I hope that all of the aldermen think about the residents and not just, it might be fun to do something at Northwestern, but for those of us who live there, it's a big deal. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathleen. Stuart Gottman? Stuart here. George Halick? Ted Pickus? Virginia Mann? Come on up, Virginia. Oh, excuse me. Okay, come on up, Ted. And then we've got Virginia Mann and Jackie Prince. I don't know if Jackie's here. And then Christine Froula. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Ted Pickus. I live at 2639 Broadway. I've only lived in Evanston for three years, but I'm very proud to live in this city. I've always wanted to live here. I thank you all for your time tonight and your careful consideration of the Northwestern issue. I am here to speak against it, and I feel very strongly that the process that the city council's undergone in this area has not really lived up to the standards that we should strive to. I think a lot of people, including Alderman Rabel, have really well articulated the ways that the university has not been held to the standards that are normally required for these types of requests. I think we've been a little, I don't want to say tricked, but I think kind of lulled with nice PowerPoints or promises, but that's not the way that these type of requests should go. The burden is on the university, and I don't think we've asked them to provide enough. I think that, in some cases, I like the idea of saying, "Let's try things." I think there have been good examples of things that we needed to try to discover that they were very valuable endeavors. But in this particular case, I think the best argument that was made is that there's not a different standard for projects that have a two-year sunset period. They're not held to a different standard, but I think we are holding it to a different standard because we feel comforted by this idea that we're doing a trial. So I think we should ask ourselves if we're living up to kind of the values that we normally evaluate these requests with, and I worry that we're not, so I ask you to vote against the measure. Thanks.
Thank you, Ted. Virginia Mann, Jackie Prince, Christine Froula, and then John Houston.
Virginia Mann, 3004 Norman D Place. I am so disappointed in Plan Commission for not following the standards set forth in our laws and policies, and the Planning and Development Committee for choosing to ignore our zoning laws and the issue of precedent as well as the interest of the residents. I'm so disappointed in council members who said, "Oh, we heard from both sides." No, you heard a few statements from people for it, and you heard an awful lot from people who live it every single day and are telling you why they are opposed and why it is harmful to our community and ultimately to our city. My biggest concern, however, is the process. I know Alderman Rue Simmons tried to make some accommodation for the neighbors, but really, they were shut out from a fair presentation of their position, from the opportunity to effectively utilize expert witnesses that they hired to educate all of you about the facts of the matter, not about opinions as to what would happen to property values, but about knowledge from expert witnesses. The community tried weeks ago to ascertain how much time they could have, whether or not we could do a PowerPoint presentation to visually show you the impact that this decision is having on our community, and we got the runaround. Ultimately, we found out recently that we would have maybe five minutes to Northwestern's 10. It's not Alderman Rue Simmons' fault. This is the way this council operates, and it's just wrong. It is absolutely wrong, and I think it is critical that each of you figure this out and find a way to make it an opportunity for citizens. Because what has happened today
Thank you.
is that you have positioned the city council and elected officials as a voice against your own residents and have opened yourself to a lawsuit that's going to put a protracted and very nasty relationship between us and all of you, and that is just wrong, and it is not only against the laws of this city, it is against the very nature of our community. So I ask you all to reconsider.
Thank you, Virginia. Jackie Prince? Come on, come on up. Nice to see you, Jackie. Then Christine Froula, John Houston, and Carla Sutton. Welcome.
Hello, City Council members. First of all, I have totally changed what I'm going to say because it's so late in the night, I'm tired, and my brain is just, bleh. I would like to say in regard to the Montessori school, thank you, Mayor, for your comment. I'm in agreement with what you said, and especially Robin Rue Simmons. Thank you. I was at an event at the Fleetwood Jordane Center, and I've been in Evanston since I was about six or seven years old, so that's a very long time. And I was looking at the stage, and I was looking at the event, and I was looking at the chairs, and I was thinking, wow, you know, this has not changed a whole lot since then. I'm seeing money being poured into Howard Street. I'm seeing money being poured into buildings, apartments. I'm seeing money being poured into now parks. But when is the Fleetwood Jordane Center going to be updated and renovated and let them at least have nice chairs and a nice stage to work with? Since I only have two minutes, I'm going to say President Trump was in Chicago. It has nothing to do with the city of Evanston, but it does. President Trump was in the city of Chicago, and I'm upset about his disparaging remarks against the superintendent of the police, and I would like to say that I support him. I support his comments, not Trump, the superintendent. And I have a message for President Trump, and it's on the back of my sweater. And this is from the superintendent.
Thank you, Jackie. And before you walk out the door, just so you know, we are doing an interior improvement of Fleetwood Jordane, and that is underway. So Alderman Rue Simmons, myself, city staff have all been working on that. So that is, that is coming, and we hope I, I don't know, interim city manager, early next year, we hope to have that.
I haven't been around very much, and I, oh, and I also appreciate Alderman Sufferedin's comments as well. I haven't been around very much, so I haven't been, you know, apprised of everything that's going on. I've been trying to read my little Cliff Notes, but it's sporadic. But thank you, I'm so glad to hear that.
You bet. I just want you to know that. All right. Thank you, Jackie. Christine Froula, John Houston. I'm going to keep rattle 'em off until somebody walks up here. Carla Sutton, Robert Gibbs, Lynn Bednar. All right, Lynn. Welcome. Then I've got Tim Gaimond, or Gaimond, I apologize for mispronouncing names, and then Laurie McFarlane. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Lynn Bednar. I'm the owner of Walsh Natural Health, which is about three blocks west of Northwestern's facilities, athletic facilities. I'm speaking on behalf of the 54 Central Street businesses which have signed a petition against the proposed zoning change. First and foremost, we don't see the benefit to the community of the proposed change. Evanston already hosts many cultural and entertainment events in more appropriate locations. I'm told that there are locations on Northwestern's campus where concerts or other events can be held that are not being utilized presently. As a business owner in Central, I can firmly state that Northwestern's events cause a decline in business and hence sales tax dollars to the city. I would invite the people earlier tonight who stated that these types of events do not cause a negative impact on businesses to visit the Central Street businesses before, during, and after Northwestern's events. You could shoot a cannon through some of our businesses on the days where there are events. Our customers need to have access to our stores, and they need to be able to park when they get there. Both of these things are an issue with current events that are already happening. So the situation, the problem is, the situation is already tenuous, and we're just adding to the pile here. In the past, we could have counted on people coming on different days, you know? So before, it wasn't as much an issue, but now with the advent and prevalence of the internet, that's not the case. Those sales are many times permanently lost. You know, right now, you know, while the city would benefit from the ticket tax, I fear that they would, or I hope that the city would also factor in the loss of sales tax dollars that may be more permanent.
Thank you, Lynn.
And apply to days beyond the days that Northwestern has events. About half of our business comes from Wilmette and the northern suburbs, and we don't want to lose this valuable revenue. I think the city should not want to lose it either.
Thank you, Lynn. We're out of time.
Okay.
Tim? Is Tim Gaimond here?
Yes.
He left. Okay, how about Laurie? Come on up. And then Mark Simon, then Mary Rosinsky, and then Ken Prosky. Welcome.
Hi, everybody. Once again, for those of you who were at PND, sorry to be back up here, but I thought you had some good comments during discussion, and I wanted to just address some of them. One of the things I wanted to talk about was the issue of precedent. It is not, you've heard that word a lot tonight, but it's not just the danger that Northwestern will try to take the inch and go for a mile when it comes back. It actually has to do with all of you facing demands from organizations in your wards who will say to you, "Northwestern is a private, nonprofit, theoretically, entity. They have facilities, and you have let them commercialize and monetize those facilities. We want to do the same thing. YMCA, we have a parking lot in back of our building. Why can't we sell cars every weekend?" It might seem strange to think that a church or temple in your neighborhood would decide to open a bar, but that kind of thing of, "Let's go into commerce," because everybody needs money. All of these organizations need money. But is that the right thing to do? You're really opening up zoning into sort of more of a Wild West thing when you're not looking at the standards that apply to that kind of use. The university U2 use is there for collegiate activities. That's why it was created, and that is really what it's intended for. The same way that the institutions in your neighborhoods are, the zoning for them is intended to make sure that they can do their mission in harmony with the neighborhood. This commercial activity for Northwestern has nothing to do with their educational mission. It is really just to make money. And I urge you to think about the repercussions in your own wards and from other people who will be saying the same thing. Why not me?
Thank you, Laurie. Mark Simon? And then we've got Mary Rosinsky, then Ken Prosky.
Yes, I'm speaking in my capacity as chairman of the Preservation Commission. I'm speaking to the 1040 Hinman Solar Panel Project that's up for potential appeal tonight. I just want to very briefly run you through the process that the commission followed in denying the certificate of appropriateness for this project. The commission makes a concerted effort to approve solar panel projects. I think that the applicant shows other projects we've approved, and I think certainly in my time on the commission, we've approved the other four or five solar panel projects that have come before us. We've certainly been looking at this issue, continue to do so. We passed a rule this summer that allowed staff to administratively approve solar panels that weren't visible from the front of the house, and we're meeting with the city's Sustainability Officer in November to try to really figure out how to best balance preservation and sustainable energy concerns. Nonetheless, in reviewing solar panel projects that are visible from the front facade, we do have to look at our ordinance, which requires us to determine whether the proposed work is compatible with the features, size, scale, proportion, mass, and color, materials, and character of the property. Our Evanston Preservation Ordinance also refers us to the National Park Service standards, and the National Park Service standards actually give several examples of solar panel projects that are permissible and impermissible. Generally, the National Park Service standards state that projects that are visually obtrusive, that are very visible from the front of the house, should be disapproved. The city of Chicago has also adopted standards, and those standards actually similarly say that projects should not be approved that are visible from the front of the house. In this particular case, we did ask the applicant if they would be willing to scale back the project so it's less visible from the street. The applicant declined, I think with good reason. I mean, the way the houses, the roofs are configured, the panels that are the most visible are those that would produce the most solar energy, just due to the way the roofs face. None of the commissioners felt this particular decision was an easy decision. It's certainly a particular case that reasonable people could disagree about. We've approved most of these projects in the past, we'll approve most of them in the future. In this one particular case, the majority of the commissioners used their best judgment and felt that this particular project was just too visually obtrusive for a very historic home and a very historic neighborhood. So thank you.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you for your service on that board. Are you going to stick around just when we get to that item if we have any questions? Are you able to? I know we've got Carlos here. He's paid to be here.
If you want me to, I'll stick around. Thank you.
All right. I think that's a good idea, just in case folks here have questions. Okay. Mary Rosinsky, come on up, Mary. Then Ken Prosky, then Doreen Price, then Mary Therese Staub.
Hi, and thanks. I don't feel like I have to talk as fast as I did before. Thank you all for hearing what we had to say at the PND meeting. I will say, though, I felt like there was a huge erosion of trust, and process was totally abandoned. And it didn't start there. It started I will say though, I felt like there was a huge erosion of trust and process was totally abandoned. And it didn't start there. It started with staff recommending that amendment without any burden being met. And then it sort of found itself recommended at Planning Commission, I'm talking about the text amendment. And it found itself at the Planning Commission, where there again, they didn't realize they didn't have some of the information because staff had misfiled some information. And then again, no one asked for studies. So the residents were failed again by the process. And then it came to you. And so that's been a real, real big problem. And it's not like there's people in this neighborhood are trying to keep anyone out or not move forward with time. People bought there, just like people, someone brought up earlier, people near the high school have all that. Well, I bought near the stadium. I knew there was going to be 45,000 people there seven times a year. I knew there was going to be 7,000 people there 18 times a year and other things. People, if I bought near the high school and I used to live near a school, I knew there was going to be kids running up and down. You buy what you expect. You expect your city to have, adhere to its zoning. So the difference is, is this is a complete different use. It's not just a text amendment, and I would contend that it is a map amendment. And I asked for a definition of the difference between a map and a text amendment from our city. And you know what I got back? There is no definition. So I'm looking at it and I'm saying, well, I look at our summary zoning uses in this thing. And I only see four places in this entire city where that kind of use is permitted. And they're downtown districts, they're commercial district, it's research park district. Those allow for indoor/outdoor commercial uses. If you're going to take a non-professional amateur area and turn it into a commercial use, I think we should be talking about doing it the correct way. Let's throw this all the way back, go for a map amendment, put it through the right process, show the right process, and then rebuild your trust with the city residents. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, thank you, Mary. All right, Ken, come on up. Then we've got Doreen Price, then Mary Therese Staub, and then Carl Klein.
I don't like repeating myself, so I'm running out of things to say because I'm here every two weeks. But I do have a couple of new things. One, the comments earlier that I heard about Evanston High School and the congestion and parking issues there this evening at Plan and Development. I actually did a parking analysis and evaluation of their parking compared to their basketball arena. And they have, on a per part, per arena seat basis, they have almost twice as much parking as Northwestern for their basketball arena. I didn't bring the slide to show you, but I have it at home if you want to see it. Second point, I'd like to clarify the math about the types of events that really create issues. They're the ones, I think that we're all speaking about, are the ones where there's, the parking lots fill up after about 3,500 to 4,000 people, because that's all the spots they have. It's any event that's bigger than 3,500 to 4,000 that is the issue for us. Not the little ones, not the concerts, the student concerts that only attract 1,700 people, from what I've heard. I don't even know they're there, to be honest with you, because it's too small of an event to create congestion and parking issues for us. But when you look at the math and you clarify the math, what I'd like to do is tell you the actual number of events that they're allowed to have, 35 going to 13, is misleading. It's very misleading. When you look at the events, as Eleanor Revel told us earlier, there are really only two or three temporary events, not 35. And they're on, the biggest one is 2,500 people. So they're good events, number one, and they don't attract enough people to create congestion or parking. So what we're really going to, we're really going from is zero temporary events with 3,500 people. We're going from zero to 13. It's a big change. Those are the ones that cause the problems. We don't have those kind of events, those temporary events now. Under the new amendment, we're going to have 13.
Thank you, Ken. Doreen, you're up next, Doreen Price, then Mary Therese Staub, then Carl Klein, then Mike Vasilko.
Hello again. I want to reiterate and support what's been said this whole entire discussion, including earlier, but especially now. Really, when you think about it and look back, just take a step back, really, we're talking about zoning issues and code and enforcement issues that, based on revenue, not necessarily outcomes or inequities that occur. And you're hearing the neighbors talk about how awful it is, which it is, when you're not heard. I think all of us in some shape or form can identify with that. And given that we all share this, then we should all be much wiser. And I don't get the sense that we are, because when it comes to zoning, I find more problems from zoning than almost anything else in terms of equity, because I just, I'm learning, as everyone else is saying about their learning, and that the zoning codes with regard to permission, having people involved early on in the decision-making process for what is allowable versus not, was changed in the years, 2000 or 2005, because in 1983, I remember, everyone got, you know, if you had a, you know, scratch on your finger or something, you had to tell everyone in the whole neighborhood, sort of zoning. And it went to, it deteriorated into you had no recourse, no one was listening to you. You have consequences that are either predictable, which would kind of indicate something wasn't done right, or unpredictable, because the nature of the person is not as reliable as you thought. And again, that mirrors what the discussions are about Northwestern, where are they? Are they with us? Are we with them? Are we with the places that we support? So I'm just, this is a plea for integrity, this is a plea for a new view from the city council, to look at things with a lighter heart, because you do have a lighter heart right now, everyone notices that.
Thank you, Doreen.
So just continue on that path and please, start changing the zoning, the way people are held accountable for what they do and the harm they do to people.
Thank you, thank you. All right, Mary Therese Staub, then Carl Klein, then Mike Vasilko, then Richard Katz, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Ann Alderman. My name is Mary Therese Staub, I live at 2627 Broadway. And I wanted to give you my personal experience this weekend for the Iowa game. I went out an hour before the game and stood at the corner of Broadway, which is one block east of Green Bay Road at Central. At that corner, we had two law enforcers, we had two people at Green Bay Road, we had three at Eastwood and four at Ashland and Central. We had no parking an hour before the game. Our little neighborhood east of Green Bay Road, there was no parking left. We had people still coming into the neighborhood, couldn't find parking. On top of that, we had a shuttle from Kingsley and Dewey Schools that was coming down Broadway north. We didn't have a crossing guard or an extra person at that corner of Broadway and Central, and the police officers were doing the best they could. During that time, we had eight or nine cars lined up on Broadway Avenue. We are across from Mayday Auto. Those people, because we closed Poplar and made it a bike rack, those people were jaywalking. We had nobody to stop the people. And when the cars were in, this is the biggest thing, the cars were always in the crosswalk, so the people were now walking into the street. We also had some issues. I asked the police officers, when do you come on duty? They say they come on about an hour before game starts and they leave right at kickoff. And then they don't show up. We have no Evanston police or Northwestern presence until a half an hour at the end of the football game. They will come back on site if there's a problem. Well, we had a blowout on Saturday, a lot of people were leaving, and we had no police. We had those bike rickshaws going down the street in our emergency lanes. We had golf carts jumping the sidewalk and backing up to the opposite way down Central Street. No police presence. And I want to just say, this is my last thing, I want to commend the police officers that worked that day, because at Eastwood and at Broadway, the motorists were not listening to the police. They would say, turn right, turn right, so we need this traffic study. This has now impacted my family, our neighborhood, and the security. So I, if we're thinking of giving them a trial error, let's have our traffic study first. I'm all with the thawing, but at the cost of our neighbors and my friends.
Thank you. All right, Carl, welcome. And then we've got Mike Vasilko, Richard Katz, and Ray Freeman.
All right, thank you Alderman Suffertin and Alderwoman Revel for listening to your constituents. Thank you Alderwoman Wynne for upholding our zoning code. How many times are we going to allow developers and private corporations bring crazy ideas before city council, which ask for so many variances that the resulting project completely runs roughshod over our zoning code? How many times are we going to grant a zoning change for these developers and private corporations? Tonight, we saw Northwestern University attempt to present their argument for a text amendment with not enough to show how they met the standards. The burden of proof is on them. Let me remind you what Northwestern University's motto is, Philippians 4:8. Finally, brothers, whatever is true, whatever is noble, whatever is right, whatever is pure, whatever is lovely, whatever is admirable, if anything is excellent or praiseworthy, think about such things. How noble, admirable, praiseworthy is it to encourage city council to disregard our local laws? That is, that is our zoning code or our codified comprehensive plan. I should be dismayed that the Planning and Development Committee did not follow what the codified 2000 City of Evanston Comprehensive General Plan states and moved forward the Northwestern University request for zoning change. But I am not surprised with some of you who seem to have no respect for our city plans or zoning code. I have told you this before, but I guess I have to remind you. The 2000 City of Evanston Comprehensive General Plan was cited and relied on by the Illinois Appellate Court in 2015 as a codified plan. The plan states on page 59, as a goal, Evanston should support the growth and evolution of institutions so long as the growth does not have an adverse impact upon the residentially zoned adjacent neighborhoods. Numerous neighborhoods who live near the U2 district have told, have told you tonight that they would see adverse effects like decreased property values and increased traffic, vehicular, and pedestrian congestion in the neighborhoods. I hope you uphold our zoning code and ultimately, do not support Northwestern University's request for zoning change via text amendment. Thank you.
Thanks, Carl. All right, Mike Vasilko, then Richard Katz, Ray Freeman, and E.V. Russell.
So before I start, I just want to applaud Alderman Revel. Thank you Alderman Suffertin, thank you very much. Alderman Wynne, for their observations, their clear observation and statements to the effect that Northwestern has not met their burden. They haven't met their burden from day one and yet this process keeps evolving. So what are, what are citizens to think is really going on? And Mayor, I have to correct you too. You said democracy was at work in Planning and Development. That was not democracy. That was Hillary getting more votes than Donald Trump winning the election. The text amendment for Northwestern is a zoning change. Everybody knows it's a zoning change, changing from a nonprofit university use to a for-profit professional sports and professional entertainment venue. That's a zoning change. Northwestern did not meet their burden. They didn't have to, it seems. It seems maybe the deal was done some time ago. Obviously, meeting the standards is optional for Northwestern. I carry this chart with me when I come to these meetings pretty regularly. It's taken from the budget every year. It's the one that shows the residents at the top of the chart, shows the city clerk as independent when he's not being, let's say, beat up by the rest of the council. Shows the mayor underneath, it shows the city manager and all the commissions underneath the residents. This room was filled with residents earlier today in Planning and Development. There were a handful of people from Northwestern, including those who spoke in favor of them. And yet somehow, this chart didn't make a difference. So if you believe in this organization, Peter, you would vote against this text amendment, so-called text amendment. Alderman Wynne, I'm sorry, Alderman Fisk would vote against this text amendment.
Thanks, Mike.
Alderman Wilson, you do the same thing.
We're up on our, we're up on our time.
Okay, well, you should vote with the rules.
Thank you. Richard, is Richard Katz, yeah, come on, come on up, Richard. Then we've got Ray Freeman, then E.V. Russell. And after that, I've got two more, that's it.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Richard Katz and I live at 2738 Garrison. It is at, it's on the north side of Evanston Hospital, Isabella Street runs east and west, basically making the south end of Garrison and the north end of Garrison also, sort of box canyons. So on football days and other big event days, it's very difficult to get into my house. After a football game, I've spent 12 minutes, and sometimes I measure it and sometimes I get so mad I can't, 12 minutes just trying to get from the canal to Garrison so I can turn south, I'm not even going as far as Ridge, to get to my house. But I don't want to make this a personal issue. I want to talk about some of the issues that other speakers have, have mentioned. My particular issue is actually something that I bought into when I bought my house. But I'm really speaking against the proposal by Northwestern to intensify the activities that are taking place on the U2 portion of the 7th Ward. First, I hope that the council will recognize almost 50 years of consistent judicial and legislative precedent on this matter, all of which has upheld the city's right to determine the character of its neighborhoods. And right now, we are talking about changing in a significant way, the character of the neighborhood. You'll hear about businesses that have signed petitions against it, you'll hear from, as the Planning Committee did earlier, Chamber of Commerce saying 71% of the businesses in Evanston support the change. There are arguments both ways. One big issue is that Northwestern has presented dollar figures in the slideshow that tell us how much Evanston is going to benefit. The one piece that's missing for me is what is the benefit for Northwestern? I have not heard a compelling need expressed by Mr. Davies and his colleague, whose name I'm, sorry, did I forget? But I haven't heard why Northwestern is requesting this. It seems to me that if you are interested in the money.
Thank you.
The council would have asked Northwestern for the use of its facilities so we could run concerts, tennis matches, and soccer and so forth.
Thank you, Richard.
But that hasn't happened, so clearly, this is their request, but why?
We're way over, Richard, we gotta, we gotta move to the next one.
I hope you'll ask him that question. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ray, E.V. Russell, Judy Berg, and then we've got Misty Whittenberg is the last one.
Good evening, or good morning.
Yeah, we're getting there.
Yeah, really. I didn't realize when I moved to Evanston that being involved with city council was a full-time job. So can I get a salary? I need some money to, to keep up with this five, six hours.
I'll give you a dollar, Ray, if you wrap it up in two minutes.
I'll try.
All right.
I'll try. Okay. So I want to talk a little bit about the Northwestern proposal. Everybody said what I, what I wrote down. The text amendment to the zoning change did not meet the burden of proof. Expert testimony from Director of Appraisal Review, Mr. Richter, who stated that it would absolutely have a negative impact on surrounding property and it does not meet zoning guidelines. So you are refusing to listen to the residents who are affected, and I thought the city council was there to represent its residents, not work against us. This reminds me of another building that you probably forgot about. It's at Pittner and Dempster, that was built without a valid zoning approval, okay? And we did ask our alderman for an impact study, which he did forward to city manager. And apparently, city manager said, we couldn't afford that impact study to see how that building would affect surrounding properties. So we have several problems with that building and I don't know why, why you allowed the building to go up. I don't know why our appeal was just not heard and, and why you're ignoring the resident's request to, you know, to, to appeal. On a, can I say on a positive note?
You've got 15 seconds.
15 seconds, okay. So Saturday, even though it was a short turnout, low turnout, I think that we made some progress in, in allowing your, whoever allowed the verbiage to that, that comment, that public comment was intended to foster dialogue. So thank you for that and thank you for starting that dialogue on Saturday.
Thank you.
And hopefully, we can figure out how to, how to work that in to city council meetings.
You just missed your dollar by five seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, though, Ray. Thank you.
Can I get overtime now?
Evie Russell, come on up. And then we've got Judy Berg, if Judy's here, and then Misty Whittenberg. Welcome.
Hold on. Evie Russell. Okay, to Alderman Wilson, who says neighborhoods evolve, yes, they do. A few years ago, you know, 10, 20 years ago, I would pick up broken glass from broken beer bottles. Now I'm picking up cans. This is from the football game, and it's a gift to you, Northwestern. Anyway, the Chamber of Commerce did say 71%, I think, but not of businesses. They said a neighborhood was for it. Well, I've walked the neighborhood since May, several hours a day, lost 10 pounds over it, by the way, dawn to dusk, and I've collected 857 to date, 859 signatures. There's another 700 online, and 60 businesses, one more today. So I don't see how it's been 70% will be for it. No, the neighborhood is against this, the vast majority. I can testify under oath over this. Another thing, Obama. Oh, it would be great to have Obama at Welsh Rhine Arena. Well, Obama is such a nice man, and I'm sure that you would come now as a charity event, whereas Trump was certainly appreciated as a commercial event. What one thing is that we cannot trust Northwestern. Well, as of today, Northwestern again says things that are not true. There are not 1,500 parking spaces. There are 1,359. Trash and litter, as you can see, is not all picked up. Welsh Rhine Arena, supposedly, they said can do events now that they couldn't do before. No, Maguire Hall had concerts, you know, of a vast more magnitude than they have now. And then another thing regarding city services. I snowplow my own property. I pay the electric, the gas, and the water on my own property, and I pay for the line repair for those things. So why is it any different from Northwestern? Just because they bring in service tax, every business and every property owner brings it, too. And that is not an excuse for changing the zoning ordinance and not upholding the zoning code that we have now and the standards.
Thank you. Thank you, Evie. Okay. Judy Berg? Is Judy here? Did Judy go home? I think she went home. Okay. Misty Whittenberg, you're going to wrap it up for us tonight, Misty.
Hi. Good evening, Misty Whittenberg. I'm here to address, Mayor, your statement that you issued on October 15th, which I really liked about free speech. And I want to start out and say that I agree with you wholeheartedly that everyone up here, everyone in this room, has a right to free speech, as does the Supreme Court. That was determined in 1968, Pickering versus Board of Education. None of you, no employees relinquish your rights as public, they say public employees, but it's applicable to you, that you would otherwise enjoy as citizens in commenting on matters of public interest. Freedom of speech is sacrosanct. The First Amendment protects all of us from arbitrary government exercise of power that would restrict our rights to speak freely about matters of public concern. But where you can limit speech, time, place, manner, you cannot, those restraints cannot favor some speech or speakers over others. As further provided by the Supreme Court, a government must either prescribe all speech or no speech at all. So, Mayor, it's your authority to impose and apply those restraints at our council meetings. At that meeting that your statement addressed, in particular, speech and speakers critical of government, specifically your resolution to censor the clerk, were constrained in 90 seconds or censored by content. You granted unlimited, unconstrained, and uncensored speech for every speaker who is supportive of your resolution. And if we include the one public commenter, he had twice as long, and I'm not totally blaming you for that. So that's where I sympathized with the complainants that your statement addressed, but I actually did also understand, to whatever extent I could, Alderman Braithwaite, why you would feel compelled, and I'm not turning this around on you, this is sincere, why you would feel compelled to speak out about feeling personally aggrieved on behalf of yourself and your fellow council members who would feel similarly, about being implicated in perpetrating like a terrible social harm that you are personally harmed by. And I understood that because that happened to me also. I know. I know. Hold on. Hold on. What I'm saying is, your whole comment about silencing speech, when I went up to speak in a similar implication situation about Alderman Wilson's statements, you literally silenced me. I requested, after debate was over, you could have given me any other time in the meeting, time, place, manner restraints have to apply to every speaker, has to be even-handed. Where there are exceptions, they don't exist here in that way. So I'm hoping that you can tell me the compelling government reason that was behind that.
Are you done with your public comment right now?
No, actually, I'm going to continue if you don't have a compelling reason.
So we have procedures here in Evanston, and those procedures allow for the public to get up and provide public comment. It's not a dialogue. It's not back and forth. When that concludes, we then go into the agenda. When we go into the agenda, it is the council member's opportunity to debate, to discuss these issues. In that meeting that you're referring to, you jumped up and you wanted to come to the podium and you wanted to speak. I said, "No, you can't come to the podium and speak." So that's what you're referring to.
It is what I'm referring to.
So in terms of, you know, do people get more time than not time? I try to be fair and impartial. You know, I think you could go back and you could look at the record, and if you want to get a stop clock out, and time every single person that got up there. You'd find some that, you know, got more and some that got less or were right on time, you know. So I try to be polite and respectful.
Right. But free speech is a citizen right. So when they are engaging in free speech, that is a citizen right. They are under the same constraints we are.
Yeah, but there's also order in our meetings.
Absolutely. I agree completely.
We could all jump up at any time during these meetings and say, "I have my freedom to speak, and I'm going to speak right now."
Oh, that's why we have, that's why we have procedures.
And you did that night.
And you silenced me.
You know?
And you did not silence the people who spoke before or after me, who spoke longer in freedom of speech. I want to know.
We can debate this after, Misty. We've got to move on to the meeting.
I would like to know when I am going to be able to continue my statement.
You can continue at the next public comment, or you can put something out there publicly.
Let me make one more point.
All right, we've got to go. Not everybody.
When people get disparaged, when people are disparaged and you say you can talk at the next public meeting. I was, you know, in the group, but I was also personally defamed. If anyone wanted to keep me from having my viewpoint heard, they just have to keep defaming me. Two weeks later, I come back, I don't get to comment because it's suppression. It's silencing and suppression. So the same rule applies whenever any of us speak as individuals to defend any of our points of view. If you let older people speak as individuals to defend themselves immediately, you cannot make us wait two weeks to be in front of a different crowd, different context, and limit what we can talk to. So I'm not going down until you can tell me the constitutional compelling reason that my speech was censored. Order is not sufficient.
I don't believe that I censored your speech that night. You had the right to speak at public, you had the right to speak at public comment. All of these elected officials who were elected by folks in Evanston have the opportunity to speak as public officials.
Would you say they're speaking in their public duties when they speak as individuals? When they, you cannot.
When they are up here at the dais, they are aldermen. That's why they're referred to aldermen and everything else.
Freedom of speech is a constitutional right. The Supreme Court has said you do not have the right to free speech as a public official. Your right is as a citizen. So you are granting some citizens, I mean, at one point, there was 20 minutes that someone spoke, not at that meeting, but.
We're going to, we'll take this up at a different time because we've got to get to the agenda.
Okay, I would like to know the time. No, I'm not, tell me the date. Tell me the date and the time.
We've got to move on.
You got it. Mr. Mayor, members of city council, I'd like to move the consent calendar. Item A.
I'd rate all of the wards if that's better.
It's payroll, September 30th, 2019 through October 13th, in a dollar amount of $2,710,951.89. I'd also like to move bills list, October 29th, 2019, in a dollar amount of $6,622,250.76. Again, these items were not on the printed agenda. I'd also like to move item.
Can you move the minutes, too?
Yes.
We're going to do the consent, we're going to do the consent agenda first before we do the special order. Do I have to have a motion not to follow?
Was the silencing about that I said I was a sexual assault victim? Because that's what it feels like. Is that not something we can talk about specifically?
Misty, I'm not going to get into a whole conversation right here while we are trying to have a public meeting.
Yes, I am trying to participate. You know, it is my duty and right to participate and to monitor you guys and make sure you're complying with the laws and our rights. So if you would like to tell me.
But you also are hijacking a public meeting where people.
I am not hijacking it.
Sure you are.
I'm telling you to tell me the date when I can address it.
You are hijacking a public meeting.
When is the date I can address it?
You can come back and you can speak at the next public comment for a couple of minutes. That's what you can do. You can write a letter to your elected officials. That does not apply to the people that are elected to represent folks in Evanston. They can speak as long as they need to speak.
Not as citizens.
Listen, Alderman Braithwaite had the right that night to say what he wanted to say.
I agree completely.
And he is an alderman, and he can say what he wants to say, and so can any alderman up here.
It is not free speech, though. Free speech is a citizen right. If you, I'm happy to say, let's have this discussion individually. It's just that nobody ever responds. So unless I'm here, I can't actually compel anything to be done.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Then give me 11 seconds, and I will stop because I will make sure this is known.
11 seconds?
11 seconds. You all orchestrated against Devon. Every bit of evidence, and some of you guys already know this, I have like 300 pages of evidence. You need to table that, and you need to table it because it's going to come out. You guys know what evidence is in some ways, and don't tell me there are things I don't know because you guys are like corrupt out of your minds if you knew all of this and you went through. I want to make sure all of you are comfortable enough that you have enough information to ruin someone's life. And if you're not, then please start investigations. Someone put a motion forward to table that item and to look into it. If any of you have any decency, you don't feel 100% sure that you had the right and authority to do that, you need to do something about it.
Thank you.
And Mayor, you are involved with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Item C is the contract.
Yeah, we're going to, I just want to check one question with the.
We can email you, Mayor, and you will respond. I will just keep doing it.
One question for the city attorney. Special orders of business, if we, can we go through the consent agendas we've started, or do we have to take some vote to hold on that? What I'd like to do is just go through the consent agenda. We'll remove the items that are going to be removed, and then I'd like to go ideally and take the special order of business, A.
Can we take a five-minute break?
I'd be up for that. If you want to make a motion, and people want to do that, we can do that. Make a motion. I would like to move for a five-minute recess to resume our council meeting at 11:25, where we'll pick up the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Seven.
All right. We'll resume this at 11:25. All right, everybody back? Okay, so, Michelle, do I have to do anything to return us to recess?
Resume.
All right. This meeting's called Back to Order. Let's go to special orders of business because we have the applicant here for A. And so Alderman Wynn, this is, where's Alderman Wynn? Alderman Wynn's not back yet. All right. Alderman Wynn coming back? Okay. Yeah, Alderman Wilson, could you introduce special order A?
Special order of business, A. This is an application for appeal to the City Council of Preservation Commission's decision denying a certificate of appropriateness for, I'm sorry, 1040 Hemen Avenue to install 18 solar panels on the roof. And the city council has the option to make a motion to accept the application for appeal. If a motion is made and adopted, the council shall affirm, modify, or reverse the decision within 45 days. So in other words, we either choose to accept or not accept the appeal tonight, and then we'll make a decision later. If no motion to accept is made, then the decision is final. I move that we accept the appeal.
Is there a second? Okay. We're going to open up for discussion now, Alderman Rainey.
I would suspend.
Oh, you were just going to move as well? Okay. Any discussion on this? Alderman Revelle.
Well, I think there are at least two good reasons why we should accept the appeal. I think this case raises a couple of really interesting questions that warrant our discussion. One, the concerns about consistency in the Preservation Commission's application of the standards for review of alterations. And then, secondly, I think it's really raised some very interesting issues for us to think about how do we harmonize our preservation ordinance with our CARP goals. And so I'd like to make sure we have an opportunity to talk about all that.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. All right. Seeing no more lights.
I'm sorry.
So we had a motion, we had a motion to accept it that was seconded. We're open for discussion. Alderman Wynn.
I'm sorry, I was out of the room, and I didn't hear all of this, but I would like us, I would like us to accept the appeal and then hear it. And I think I heard the second half of what Alderman Revelle said, and I agree with that. We really need to have some kind of rethinking of solar panels, given what we're facing with climate action.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk.
Yes, well, I'm going to vote not to accept the appeal, although I agree that we need to have a discussion with the Preservation Commission about our goals. And I think that discussion should happen prior to allowing the homeowner to go ahead with these panels. They can always reapply.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no more lights, all in favor of, excuse me, I need to do a roll call vote, I think. City Clerk, could you take the roll and assist for the application for the appeal?
Alderman Sufferton?
Oh.
Alderman Rainey? I'm sorry, Revelle. Almost 12. Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Reese Simmons?
Aye.
All right, so the application for appeal to the City Council Preservation Commission decision denying the certificate of appropriateness for 1040 Hemen Avenue to install 18 solar panels on the roof. This appeal has been accepted by the Evanston City Council on a seven to two vote. City staff will set up another day for us to hear that appeal, or the city council to hear that appeal. So thank you. Item B on special.
Do you want to, sorry, do you want to just set it for November? I apologize.
It's late, we understand.
Just so everybody.
So everybody knows at this meeting, that's fine.
I think we should do that so the applicants know.
Okay.
Okay.
Does that work, city?
I would recommend the second meeting in November. It's still within the 45 days, and we have a similarly hefty agenda for the 11th, so it would help the applicant.
So what date would that be?
November 25th.
All right, so that appeal will be heard on November 25th, Monday, November 25th.
Should that be made into a motion?
Do I have to motion that? Sorry. All right, all in favor?
Oh, motion's done.
All right, is there somebody that will move a motion?
I move that we set it on at.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the meeting's November 25th. All right, next item is the fiscal year 2020 and 2021 proposed budget discussion. This is for discussion this evening. For those of you watching out in the audience, we had a meeting this past Saturday, two days ago, on the 2019, or 2020 and 2021 budget. We tasked the interim city manager and her staff with several requests for analysis and budget MOOs. Not surprisingly, they haven't been produced over the weekend, so we don't have them today. So almost as an objection, I'd propose that we resume this conversation on the budget at our next meeting, which would be the November 11th meeting. Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so this.
Motion table.
Do I need to motion to table a discussion?
No.
All right, thank you. All right, so we're just gonna move, and we'll have this discussion, and I'll be on the agenda for November 11th. All right, we're not gonna move to the consent agenda. Alderman Braithwaite, if you could take us through the minutes and then the APW, it'd be great.
Sure, I thought I'd just exercise some privilege first and wish Alderman Fleming a very happy birthday before we.
It's a good, it's a good thing we issued it with 30 minutes left in the day.
Today, right now. It just speaks to her commitment.
I hope somebody brought a birthday cake we can eat right now.
Right, right.
There was no cake, there's been no cake for the record because then someone accused me or something.
Right. And so out of respect for Alderman Fleming, we're gonna try to get her home before 12 o'clock midnight. Why? Because we all know what happened. Nothing good, nothing good. All right. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I'd like to move the approval of the October 14th, 2019 minutes. I'd also like to move the payroll bills September 30th through October 13th in the dollar amount of $2,710,951.89, and also the bills list October 29th, 2019 in the dollar amount of Item B, the contract award with Gov HR USA. City manager did not pass through our committee. Item C, the First Amendment Howard, Howard and Ridge Tax and Financing District, that was for action, and we voted to keep that on file. Item D was the approval of the sole source agreement with Alstefir Power Systems to provide repairs for High Lift Number Four Natural Gas Engine. Item E is Resolution 96-R-19, accepting the grant award to fund congregate senior meal program at Levy Center and Fleetwood Jordan Community Center. Item F is Resolution 97R-19, appointing a director and alternative director to the Solid Waste Agency of Northern Cook County. I believe that's the mayor and our interim city manager. Item G is Resolution 116-R-19, accepting a grant award for the Long Term Care Unbusman Item H is Resolution 117R-19, intergovernmental agreement with Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services to provide greater cost coverage for ground emergency medical transportation provided to beneficiaries of the Illinois Medicaid plans and other similar state administered medical programs. And then item I is Ordinance 144-0-19.
Pull it, please.
Excuse me?
Pull it, please.
Yeah, it's removed at the request of Alderman Sufferton. Item J is Ordinance 20-0-19, amending the Title I, Chapter 10, City of Evanston's Code of Ethics and Board of Ethics.
Could you take that off the list, please?
Okay, that's the request of Alderman Revelle. Item K is Ordinance 98-0-19, amending the City Code Title III, Chapter 31, regarding the regulation and collection of boxes. That's for introduction. Item L is Ordinance 129-0-19, amending the City Code Section 1-17-1, purchases of goods and services. This is also for introduction. This ordinance will allow for the current purchasing limiting, limit threshold to move from 20,000 to 25,000. Ordinance M is, excuse me, yeah, M. Ordinance 124-0-19, sale of surplus property, fleet vehicles. That is for introduction and action. And I think Alderman Fleming, you made a request at committee to allow for staff to explore, allowing for our city staff and other residents, and to follow from Alderman Simmons to allow for vehicles to be sold to small businesses as well. So they're gonna come back to our committee for that. All right. And I think that's it? Oh, I'm sorry, I was reading for my amended. Where am I now on the regular?
N.
Thank you. That's what happens late at night. Thank you. Item N is, is Ordinance 92-0-19, amending the portions of the City Code Title 10 to permit e-bikes and implement requirements for bike share companies operating in Evanston. This is for action. Item O is Ordinance 96-0-19, amending the City Code Section 4-2, to update the gender neutral, neutral restroom requirements. That's for action. Item P is Ordinance 100-0-19, authorizing the city to borrow funds from the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency Water Pollution Control Loan Program. Staff's recommending that approval of the ordinance, and that's for the protection IPA in the, let me finish reading this. The ordinance authorizes the city to borrow up to $1,700,000. That debt service will be paid by the sewer fund. Item Q is Ordinance 112.
Please pull Q, R, and S.
Who's that?
Sufferton? Yeah, the three parking.
Okay, item R is.
Hold up.
No, R and S.
Q, R, and S, everything that's.
Got it, got it, got it, got it.
That's, that's.
All right, thank you, thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Ruth Simmons, could you take us through planning and development?
Ordinance 135-0-19, amending portions of the zoning ordinance related to permitted uses within the U2 zoning districts.
Can we take that off the agenda, please?
Ordinance 127-0-19, map amendment to rezone 951 through 1125 Howard Street from commercial, from C1 commercial to B2 business. It's for action.
Alderman Simmons?
Yes, removing C. Yes, I have it.
All right, thank, thank you. All right, Alderman Fisk, could you take us to Human Services Committee?
Sure, Ordinance 79-0-19.
Remove, remove that, please?
Oh, sure. Okay, that's it.
Off, all right. Alderman Revelle, could you do Rules Committee?
I would like to take this item A off the agenda.
Okay.
Resolution 99-R-19.
All right, can you also introduce the appointments?
The appointments. For the Utilities Commission for reappointment, David Everhart, Jonathan Nusma, and Eric Rosenberg. This is for action. And for appointment to the Arts Council, Chantel Healy.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, City Clerk, could you take the roll, please, on the consent agenda?
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
All right, consent agenda passed the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote. We're gonna move to the items that were removed from it. First one was in APW, Alderman Braithwaite, number, letter I, Caravalli.
Of City Council, I'd like to move item I, which is Ordinance 144-0-19, approving and authorizing the insurance sale not to exceed issuance, thank you, it's late, sale of not to exceed of Series 2019A and Series 2019B, Caravalli Montessori School of the City of Evanston, Illinois, authorizing the execution and delivery of a bond loan agreement and other documents related there, too, authorizing the sale of said bonds to Fifth Third and approving related TEFRA hearing, Caravalli Conduit Financing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, open for discussion. Alderman Sufferton?
Sure, so what's your pleasure? Do you all want to set a number? Do you want to make an amendment? How do you want to do this? Or you want to just vote with no conduit fee because you think it's being brought late? I mean, I would like to propose that we add a conduit fee when we bring this back November 11th, but I don't know, does that mess up your schedule? I don't think we should be doing this for free. So you tell me it's your ward, what do you want to do? I don't want to hold it up, but I think the taxpayers deserve to get something out of it.
Alderman Wynn, I'll let you go.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that we can, we should attach a fee to any of these going forward, but these bonds have been in process for quite some time, and I don't believe that adding this, I understand that this is coming to certain members of the council for the first time, but I don't think adding this onto the Caravalli Montessori School at this time is, is appropriate. And I am not certain, I had a brief conversation with them, but I don't know that adding a fee of $10,000 onto this will allow them to continue to move forward with this. So I would prefer not to do this, but I certainly would support requiring a fee for every other one that we do going on in the, to the future.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson, then Alderman Rainey.
And I, I agree with Alderman Wynn, but I also appreciate that Alderman Sufferton identified the opportunity for the fee here. I do think we should include that in our policy and procedure going forward. Certainly, the past practice is, I think, kind of lulled us into just, you know, accepting that, you know, we do get the costs reimbursed, we do get attorney's fees, so it's, we're not losing money, but staff is putting time forward. So my preference would be to go ahead and proceed with this, but that we should set a policy going forward for what that would look like on, on some kind of, you know, reasonable fee for, for other applicants.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Rainey, then Alderman Ruth Simmons?
I, I agree, going forward, when we originate a bond, we should have one, one level of fee, and when we do a refinancing for an organization like this, we should have another fee. But in this case, I think we should move forward.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Ruth Simmons?
I would like to see us take the time to learn more about best practices in other communities and standards here and come up with a fee on this transaction. So do we have the time to do that?
I think, I think the question is, do they have the time to do that? And this process has been going on, I mean, they need to close on November 14th, so I, I don't think they.
Will you approve it on the 11th, though?
But, but if, if we decide on, on the 11th that they have to pay us $10,000, it's only three days that they have an opportunity to make a change. You know, I recognize that we, and I agree, that we should attach a fee going forward, but I do think if we're gonna study best practices in other communities, that I don't think that, that we should penalize Caravalli because we are just discovering this now. I mean, they've, they, this is their, this is a refinancing, they've done this twice before with us, they were not expecting this.
If I may?
Yes, Ron.
Also to add, in terms of timeframe first, I totally respect where you guys are coming from with the fee, totally understand where you're coming from with that. In terms of the timeframe, it takes months to get all the paperwork and all the legal things done for the bond financing, and it takes multiple, multiple attorneys to do that. The other day, we had something like eight attorneys working on something, so the cost for a school is pretty astronomical when you're just talking about all the legal fees. So to have to go through this whole process again would definitely impact our time. We would not have time to go do some, another plan, if that's what it took. Thank you for your concern.
I think, I think I heard that the standard or average fee was $10,000. Is that, did we say that?
I don't know where that.
I feel like the city manager said that.
Yep, I did say that, but we haven't had time to fully vet the, the issue. That was just one comparable we came up with from another jurisdiction.
I know, I heard it somewhere. Okay, well, I would be comfortable moving forward agreeing on a fee, otherwise I won't be in support of it.
All right. Alderman Flem, Alderman Fleming, then Wilson.
Just real quick, you know, this is, this is tough because we, we should not, all due respect to you all, we should not, as a city, probably taking on things where we're increasing staff load. I mean, we've laid off a lot of staff, we all talk about our staff and being, you know, overextended even in the regular jobs. Not that this is not part of their job, but my point being that this is something our staff had to work on, and we should respect their time. We should also respect that that's time they're not working on other things, which the taxpayers are gonna benefit from or need. So I don't want to put you all in a pickle because you have done what we asked you to do. I think, in my opinion, this is more of a reflection of, unfortunately, we maybe didn't think about how to do this a little better before you guys got here at the ninth hour. So that's, you know, a little bit of a burden on us. I also would like a fee, but out of respect for the time you put, you put into it, you know, maybe you could try to meet us halfway and go back to your board and figure out what you could produce this time, since we don't have a fee schedule set. But I would like our, you know, interim city manager, as we move in forward, and have things like this, where our staff are working on things that, you know, aren't necessarily the result of taxpayer need, that we are just a little more mindful of the workload that we're putting on our staff and how we can compensate for that.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
I think it's largely been covered, but you know, this is, this is how things get done. We, as Alderman Sufferton identifies something, we move forward with it and we change things. But I'm just not comfortable, you know, potentially jamming it up or potentially losing the deal on that. So I just hope that we can proceed with this one and go ahead, and as Alderman Simmons said, you know, really give this some thoughtful conscientious thought on, on what this can look like, how the information can get published. I know the interim city manager said that there's gonna be materials on the website, so that'll give us an opportunity to promote what is available.
All right. So given this conversation, does anyone want to propose an amendment to this, or I'll just take the vote on the ordinance itself? Okay?
There isn't.
No, we didn't, there wasn't.
I don't want to hold it up. I mean, I'm, no, but.
Okay, so we'll just, we'll just take, we've got a, this item was moved and was seconded. So City Clerk, if you could please take the roll on Ordinance 144-0-19, approving and authorizing the issuance of the sale not to exceed of Series 2019A and Series 2019B for the Caravalli Montessori School of the City of Evanston, Illinois, authorizing the execution and delivery of a bond loan agreement and other documents related there, too, and authorizing the sale of said bonds to the Fifth Third Bank, and approving related TEFRA hearing.
Okay. Alderman Sufferton?
No.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
All right. Ordinance 144-0-19 is introduced to the City Council on a six to three vote. It passes. All right.
So it'll be back for action on the 11th?
So it'll be back for action on the 11th, November 11th. Okay, thank you. Thank you for staying so late. Okay, we're gonna move now Alderman Braithwaite to J.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, I'd like to move item J, Ordinance 20-0-19, amending the Title I, Chapter 10, City of Evanston's Code of Ethics and Board of Ethics. The members of the Ethics Subcommittee recommended adoption of this ordinance 20-0-19, amending the City Code Title I, Chapter 10, City of Evanston's Code of Ethics and Board of Ethics and Board of Ethics rules. This is for introduction.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, this is open for a conversation. Alderman Revelle.
Well, as I was rereading the draft in our packet, I, I noticed there was a change, and I couldn't remember that we, it was something we talked about. It was, it's on page 376 of our packet. It's, it's H, something H, appearances. And so the new version says, "No covered person except elected officials," so that's the new wording. "No covered person except elected officials shall appear on behalf of or against any private party before any city board or commission." And, and so I was just, I was confused about that, and I didn't understand where that came from and what, what exactly does that mean?
Okay, so.
Because in the previous version, it didn't, there was no "except elected officials" phrase.
376, H.
Okay, so maybe we could, so I think the idea was that we didn't want elected officials to not be able to talk about, to advocate a position for or against something, but that's different than appearing on behalf of. that's different than appearing on behalf of, so...
Because right now-
So, for example, let's say planning development is, having a meeting, Alderman Braithwaite comes up and speaks about something, you know, that happens a lot, like, you know, a council member will come up and talk about a particular item, not just you all.
Eddie is that guy.
Alderman A. will come up to a committee meeting and speak about a particular thing. We have rules prohibiting, already rules on, I think on the books prohibiting appearances at things like zoning and planning, so those rules would still apply, so I think maybe it's a, "No covered person except elected officials unless otherwise provided by ordinance shall appear on behalf of or against." Would that fix it, council?
No.
No?
No, I agree.
I don't, I don't know the reason for the change, Alderman Ravel. I can check with Alex and get back to you. This is just up for introduction.
Okay.
Yeah, so maybe we can just kind of look at it more closely before next time.
I'll take another analysis.
Okay, so flag that.
One thing I wanted to note, the ordinance contemplates that every new employee would have to be trained in 30 days. I'm just worried that we won't meet that deadline. If you can make an amendment to 90 days, I think that is a timeframe that we could meet. 30 days seems tight. The new employees are getting trained up.
Hold before you make that, Alderman. I've got Alderman Fleming, his light's been on, and we can do that. Alderman Fleming?
Right, so I would like to, I have a, well, I have something I'd like to have added. So, in reading the Plan Commission meeting minutes from, or the Preservation Committee for the Henman Project, and reading the notes from that, I realized that one of the commissioners abstained in his vote, and there was no reason given, so be, I guess, here in the Ethics Board, because of the Rules Committee for Council, that wouldn't apply. I would like us to update this, to reflect that if a commissioner, you know, board or commission person wants to abstain, that needs to be noted why they're abstaining, and they also should not be participating in the discussion, because that also happened at this meeting. So, I think we need to, I mean, we have that rule, I believe, here at council, that if you're abstaining, you need to say why, so I think we need to be correct across the board that that needs to happen. So, I guess I'd like to make an amendment that that is added to our Ethics Code. Would be the appropriate place for it to be?
So, it's page 374, 1-10-4B. It requires that the person disclose the existence of a potential, so we can just maybe add a clause, council, that says, exactly what Alderman Fleming said, so that, add a change to 10B. I'll make a motion to add these things, then the 90 days training.
All right, we got a few more-
Any other changes?
Yeah, we got a few more lights on. Alderman Fisk, then Alderman Rainey.
So, Alderman Wilson, are you making these changes?
I'll make a motion, I'm making a list here.
Okay, and I'm wondering if the issue about abstention, if that should also appear in the rules of the individual committees, because I think it's very, very clear that, I mean, we follow the rules, but I don't think some of the committees understand them, and use that as an easy way of not making a decision, which we all have to make decisions.
I got that, Alderman Wilson. Okay, thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Just curious, as to during, when we're having an introduction of an item, are we really in a position to be amending that item? Is in our rules set? I thought when we were introducing an ordinance, that amendments and changes took place at the second meeting.
That would be good, if she could just take the feedback from this and add it to what we see for action.
So, Alderman Rainey, I'm looking at Rule 20.1, and I don't see that requirement listed.
You don't see what?
I don't see the requirement listed that we must wait for the data for the action for amendments. Wilson?
I agree, I mean, I'd say if Alderman Wilson's written these down, why don't we just do the amendment to it, and then we'll pass it for introduction, and you guys can add it to the next version we say. Let's just do this, just to keep it in order, I guess. All right, Alderman Wilson, you want to make an amendment?
So, I move that we make a couple of changes. One would be to change the training period from 30 days to 90 days. The second would be to amend 1-10-4 subsection B to include a clause that will require disclosure of the reason for an abstention, and, yeah, that's it.
No, it was removal, it was disclosure, and then not participating in the conversation.
About appearances.
He also made, he also made the mention.
Right, yeah, he did that, too, but I wasn't going to bring all that up, but if you abstain, you don't participate in the conversation.
So, okay, and that, yeah, the rest of the paragraph covers that, to, including, but not limited to, participating in any discussion, debate, or vote, that's already in there. So, if we add the clause about the abstention, that would be covered by that, presumably. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, so that's the motion.
And we're cleaning up whatever we decide about the appearances business.
Yeah, and so I think, does staff have general direction from Alderman Ravel's? So, I'm not going to make a motion on that, because I don't have the language off the top of my head.
All right, is there a sec? Alderman Rainey, did you have anything, or, okay, is there a second to that motion, amendment motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
So, I move that we introduce it as amended.
Okay, is there a second? All right, city clerk, could you take the roll, please, on J, ordinance 20-0-19, amending the city's Code of Ethics and Board of Ethics?
Yes. Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
And Alderman Roos Simmons?
Aye.
All right, ordinance 20-0-19 is introduced on a nine to zero vote, passes nine to zero by the Evanston City Council. All right, Alderman Braithwaite, could you move to Q? So, we have the three parking issues.
Members of city council, I'd like to move item Q, ordinance 112-0-19, amending the Title X, Chapter 11, Section 12, Schedule 12B, parking zones, adding paid parking to Greenwood Street between Chicago Avenue and Sherman Avenue. That's for action.
Second.
All right, any conversation? Would you take it off? Okay, all right.
Can I make a quick comment?
Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, thanks, it's still my birthday. I don't, I'm not against parking, but I am going to vote no for this for the same reason I voted last time, which was, you know, I now notice in certain areas near transit, we have meters, in certain areas near transit, we do not have meters. We did not do the parking study a couple years ago. You know, my concern is we're doing these, you know, one kind of, one street at a time, and just kind of depending on what side of the tracks you live on, you might not have meter, so I'm going to be voting no.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no more lights, city clerk, could you take the roll on ordinance 112-0-19?
Alderman Sufferton?
No.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wayne?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Roos Simmons?
No.
All right, ordinance 112-0-19, passes the Evanston City Council on a six to three vote. Alderman Braithwaite, could you take us to item R?
Yep, item R is ordinance 113-0-19, amending the Title X, Chapter 11, Section 12, Schedule 12B, amending paid parking to South Boulevard from Chicago Avenue east to driveway of 156 South Boulevard.
516.
Ooh, did I, 516.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, open for conversation. Alderman Sufferton?
Just quick, because it's late, this benefits one property owner who could purchase parking from the city in a parking lot, and so I'm going to vote no.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Yeah, I had a question. I'm trying to think what's in the area that would benefit from this, and it's just the business, I think, on the southeast corner. But maybe Alderman Wayne can tell us a little bit more about why she requested this.
Thank you. Alderman Wayne?
Yes, this does benefit, we have two commercial buildings on the corner of South Boulevard and Chicago Avenue. One is, happens to be a law office that is very busy. It's an Evanston resident whose law practice used to be in Northbrook, and he is, practices real estate law, so he frequently has closings in his office. And then, the next building over is a commercial building, and it has two commercial tenants in it. Their, South Boulevard is filled with commuter parking, because the south side of South Boulevard is free, and it is filled with commuters, starting about 7:00, 7:30 in the morning. And the lot one, we have plans for lot one, and that really would not help the potential clients coming to these two commercial buildings. So, I have requested with, at the request of several of these businesses, that they have parking meters installed, so that, one, the city makes money, two, we enhance their business experience, and we also retain them as businesses. So, this brings revenue to the city, helps our several local businesses, and the commuters will just walk a couple more blocks for that. And I'm happy to look at making parking around our transit centers more similar to each of them, but at South Boulevard, it's an unusual situation. So, that, those are the businesses, Alderman Rainey, Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Alderman Wayne. All right, seeing no more lights, this item has been moved and seconded. City clerk, could you take the roll on ordinance 113-0-19?
Yes. Alderman Sufferton?
No.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wayne?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Roos Simmons?
No.
All right, ordinance 113-0-19 passes the Evanston City Council on a six to three vote. Alderman Braithwaite, could you take us to item S?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of city council, I'd like to move ordinance number 116-0-19, amending the Title X, Chapter 11, Section 12, ordinance 12A, parking zones, adding paid parking to Sherman Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no lights, city clerk, could you take the roll on ordinance 116-0-19?
Alderman Sufferton?
No.
Alderman Ravel?
No.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wayne?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Roos Simmons?
No.
All right, ordinance 116-0-19 passes the Evanston City Council on a six to three vote. Okay, we're now going to move to planning and development. Item A was removed from the agenda. Alderman Roos Simmons, can you introduce that?
Yes, staff recommends city council adoption of ordinance 79019, creating Title II, Chapter 15 of the Evanston City Code, forming a citizen police review commission. This is for introduction.
I'm sorry, A?
That was A for Plan-
A was in Northwestern, okay.
You know what, I apologize.
It's late, I get it. Okay, reintroduce that.
Okay, the Plan Commission recommends approval of a tax amendment to the zoning ordinance to revise language regarding permitted uses in the U2 University Athletic Facilities districts for introduction.
And this is ordinance 135-0-19. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this is open for discussion. Okay, seeing no lights, city clerk, could you please take the roll on ordinance 135-0-19?
Yes. Alderman Sufferton?
No.
Alderman Ravel?
No.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wayne?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Roos Simmons?
No.
All right, ordinance 113-0-19 passes the Evanston City Council on a six to three vote. Alderman Braithwaite, could you take us to item S?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, I'd like to move ordinance number 116-0-19, amending the Title X, Chapter 11, Section 12, ordinance 12A, parking zones, adding paid parking to Sherman Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no lights, city clerk, could you take the roll on ordinance 116-0-19?
Alderman Sufferton?
No.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wayne?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Roos Simmons?
No.
All right, ordinance 116-0-19 passes the Evanston City Council on a six to three vote. Okay, we're now going to move to planning and development. Item A was removed from the agenda. Alderman Roos Simmons, can you introduce that?
Yes, staff recommends city council adoption of ordinance 79019, creating Title II, Chapter 15 of the Evanston City Code, forming a citizen police review commission. This is for introduction.
I'm sorry, A?
That was A for Plan-
A was in Northwestern, okay.
You know what, I apologize.
It's late, I get it. Okay, reintroduce that.
Okay, the Plan Commission recommends approval of a tax amendment to the zoning ordinance to revise language regarding permitted uses in the U2 University Athletic Facilities districts for introduction.
And this is ordinance 135-0-19. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this is open for discussion. Okay, seeing no lights, city clerk, could you please take the roll on ordinance 135-0-19?
Yes. Alderman Sufferton?
No.
Alderman Ravel?
No.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wayne?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Roos Simmons?
No.
All right, ordinance 135-0-19 passes for introduction, the Evanston City Council on a six to three vote. Alderman Roos Simmons, could you take us to?
Yes.
C now.
C, ordinance 126019, allowing cannabis dispensaries in certain zoning districts. The Plan Commission and staff recommend adoption of ordinance 126019, allowing cannabis dispensaries in certain zoning districts. This ordinance will update the zoning ordinance to create a definition for cannabis dispensary business, establish applicable general provisions for cannabis dispensaries, including a 1,500-foot separation requirement between dispensaries and a 750-foot separation requirement from schools, and amend the special uses in the business, commercial downtown, research park, and special purpose in our overlay zoning districts. This is for action.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, this is open for conversation. Alderman Fisk?
Yes, I'd like to amend this, to remove the B1 zoning district from the ordinance. That will mean that we amend Section 2 to prohibit B1, and eliminate in its entirety Section 11.
What's B1?
This is point of information.
Okay, B1, the B1 district in our zoning ordinance says, "To promote and preserve small-scale, limited shopping and business uses that service the neighborhoods in which the business uses are located. Uses share common characteristics such as relatively small storefronts built to the front lot and provide limited services. No individual use shall exceed 7,500 square feet in size."
So, what are you saying?
So, they're really neighborhood, a neighborhood shopping area.
Page 578 has the drawing that you can tend to see where they're at.
Alderman Fisk, are you meaning just B1 or B1A as well?
No, just B1.
Okay, all right, is this, I've got a lot of lights here right now. There was an amendment, can I?
Second.
Is there a second to that amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, Alderman Braithwaite, did you want to?
No, I was just, I was just trying to get some verification and figure out what are we ruling out.
Gotcha, so let's go with Alderman Wilson, then Alderman Roos Simmons.
Thank you, and in looking at the map, Alderman Fisk could raise some concerns about certain, you know, I guess, neighborhood concerns, and for the most part, the B1s are kind of taken out from proximity to schools in any event, so I think this really is not a significant impact as far as the change to the ordinance, and it doesn't affect the existing one, so I would support the amendment.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Roos Simmons?
I want to be careful that, I guess I need to look at a map and give me specific examples of what that-
It's page 578.
578. And so, my next question is, there are the social equity licenses that are to be approved, I believe, in May, and I understand that those are designated, okay, what I don't understand, are they designated for targeted areas, or do the residents need to be residents of targeted areas to apply for the social equity license? And because Aye.
Any opposed? None, okay. The motion itself was moved and seconded, so City Clerk, could you please take the roll on Ordinance 126-0-19? This is for action.
Oh, sorry.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Revel.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson. Alderman Rue Simmons.
Aye.
All right, Ordinance 126-0-19, allowing cannabis dispensaries in certain zoning districts, as amended, passes the Evanston City Council on a 9 to 0 vote. Alderman Fisk, can you take us to Human Services Committee, item A?
Absolutely. It's Ordinance 79019, creating Title II, Chapter 15 of the Evanston City Code, forming a citizen police review commission. It's for introduction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Open for discussion. Alderman Fleming?
So I pulled this off, I planned to vote no, however, I will say that the, I guess, not the version we have in our packet, but the version before it was amended, I approved of, the version in the packet I do not support because of things like, the clause is put back in there for the confidentiality policy for people who are going to apply, and I'm sorry, I don't have it open, but there's one more thing in there, but essentially, I think it's too restrictive on the citizens. I think the things that they're talking about, they'll talk about in public, in a public meeting, then they can go into executive session, which has the same confidentiality rules that we are under, and then they come out and they continue their conversation. So having the confidentiality clause, or whatever we're calling it, in there, I think makes it more restrictive, and the error, we're trying to make sure people understand that we do hold our police accountable and to a high standard. We should not have this new board be even more restrictive than the old board was.
Thank you, Alderman. Any discussion? Seeing no lights, City Clerk, could you please take the roll on Ordinance 79-0-19, creating Title II, Chapter 15 of the Evanston City Code, forming a citizen police review commission?
Alderman Sufferton. Alderman Revel. Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fleming. Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Rue Simmons.
No.
Okay, Ordinance 79-0-19, passes the Evanston City Council on a 7 to 2 vote. Alderman Revel, can you take us to item A under Rules Committee?
Yes, this is Resolution 99-R-19, an amendment to the Council Rule 18.6, motion to table an item. The Rules Committee and Staff recommends adoption of this resolution, which amends the rule regarding tabling an item, and this is for action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this is open for discussion. Alderman Revel?
Yes. We've had at least two, well, tabling motions where we've tabled it to, not to a specific council meeting, but rather to the occurrence of a particular event. I'm thinking of the Alderman Wilson's motion about Harley Clark a number of many months ago, where he tabled it, or got tabled to when the state of Illinois adopted a budget or something. So I guess I would suggest that we add another phrase to this, so the matter may be tabled to a later point in the same meeting, or to a specific subsequent regular council meeting, or until the occurrence of a specific event. So it still makes it specific, but it doesn't say we, because how can we know what council meeting we might have in mind?
Is there a second to that amendment? Okay, Alderman Wilson?
So I'm not inclined to support that amendment, because if the, the motion's not debatable, so we wouldn't have an opportunity to converse about it, and if it was to an event that's, for example, never going to happen, like this meeting ending tonight.
This meeting's going to end.
It is? Well, I don't believe it. I mean, if, or if, you know, it's nonspecific enough or ambiguous enough that it's something that doesn't, you know, has the potential for not occurring. So I don't, my intention was to make it finite, to have a specific date or meeting or something finite as far as the tabling, so that's my desire. So I don't want it to, you know, a specific event, that's too ambiguous.
So I guess my question is then, how would we have handled that Harley Clark motion?
Well, I would have preferred it never have happened.
Right, I know, you're the wrong person to ask.
Which is why, yeah, you're asking me, and I think that that was not the best plan.
Well, actually, a more recent one, where I tabled, I tabled the motion on approving the sale of alcohol at Welsh Ryan Arena because we did not yet know what was going to be happening in, with regard to the zoning amendment. So I'm not tabling it to a specific council meeting, a certain council meeting, but rather to the occurrence of, well, I don't know, the occurrence of an event, i.e. the approval of the amendment to do whatever we're going to do with the U2 district.
Well, let's say it didn't get introduced tonight, and it died in committee, then your tabling motion, you tabled it to something that never occurred. If that were to happen that way. I understand that you would have liked that, but I don't want to create a situation where it can be tabled to, you know, an event that never actually comes to pass, or it has a risk of that happening. So that's my personal opinion.
Clerk Reed, did you want to have something to add to this?
Just as a parliamentary procedure note, a motion to table, under our current rules, can be brought up at any subsequent meeting, and maybe Corporation Council can help just clarify this. Oh, no, water spilled, it's fine. Nothing good happens after midnight, is water spilled.
Low grade.
Low grade, but better than less. So within the Open Meetings Act, an alderman could table, you know, for example, the Harley Clark issue, and bring it up at a subsequent meeting without, you know, if something were to happen the day before a meeting, could we vote on that at a meeting if an alderman were to bring it, remove it from the table?
And continue it to another meeting, is that what you?
Right.
Yeah, we could do that.
And so there is a mechanism for essentially the problem that we're trying to solve.
If you're not ready to discuss it, you would just, into the record, just continue it to another meeting. Like, let's say, you know, for example, the liquor, you would have set it for, let's say, the second meeting, a meeting in October. If that meeting comes up, you're not ready to discuss it, you could continue it to a future meeting. That is one way to handle it.
And if an alderman wants to move or table an item to a date certain, that's already a possibility, as well as designating something as a special order of business, those are two avenues for folks to?
Special order of business, right. So this is just trying to address the tabling that can happen where it never really comes back. I have a few.
Yeah.
Anyway.
I mean, I guess the answer is that an alderman has the power, there is no motion that can be tabled and never come back, because at any meeting, an alderman can take it off the table.
If they don't, it just stays out there forever.
Then take it off the table.
But I'm saying, if they don't, it's going to work, it's going to happen next time.
If nobody moves, to take it off the table, it just stays there forever.
Yeah, then just someone.
And probably, you know, you don't want it to stay there forever, you probably want things off and dealt with, I would think. So that's, so I support the change for those reasons. I think we should, you know, not have it.
All right. So we have an amendment that was seconded by Alderman Revel to add to this language or a specific event. All in favor of that change? All opposed?
Aye.
All right, so it seems like the opposed has it on that one. So this is a resolution, so we can take a, I do need a roll? I thought I could do both, okay. So this is, what's that?
I was just making sure we had a motion.
Okay, and we have a motion from Alderman Wilson, seconded by Alderman Wynn. This is Resolution 99-R-19, Amendment of the City Council Rule 18.6, motion to table an item. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so this item passes the City Council on a 9 to 0 vote. We now are going to move to call of the wards. Alderman Sufferton. Alderman, thank you.